Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Mashpee Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, May 21. And we're starting at 5:30 tonight. 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The Town Hall, the Waquoit Meeting Room. We are broadcast live on local channels 8 and 1072. The meeting will be recorded and we're streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. You can also zoom in if you wish. The Zoom is, oh, I think you would have that in your agenda, right at the bottom. So, the first thing we're supposed to deal with now is the Housing Production Plan Workshop with the Affordable Housing Commission. Good evening. We're gonna wait on this, if Mary comes pretty soon.
She's right here.
Oh, there she is. There she is, okay.
Hi.
Hello.
So you opened the meeting?
I opened the meeting.
So continue.
Well, let's call the meeting to order.
Should we, should we open the Housing Committee?
Pledge of Allegiance.
So let's open the Housing Committee meeting and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. How does that sound? Go ahead, Michael.
Hi. I'd also at this time like to call to order the Affordable Housing Committee meeting.
Do you have quorum?
We do have a quorum.
They should come and sit at the table.
Come sit at the table, please.
Come on up. Sharon, Denise, and Jerry.
And so, hi, I'm Mary Wagon. I'm sorry, I was stuck in traffic. That was a little bit of a surprise. So what we'll do is, now that we're both convened, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do introductions. Does that sound good? So please, I invite you all to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end.
And I believe we're being videographed and recorded, correct? Okay. So Mike, we'll start with you guys. Why don't you go around and introduce the, introduce yourselves?
I'm Mike Sparks. I'm the very recent Chair of the Housing Committee.
I'm Jerry Tudor, a member of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Sharon Muller, a member of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Denise Jeffreyon, a member of the Housing Affordable, Affordable Housing Committee.
And?
I'm Paula.
I'm Paula Peters and I am a member of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay. And we have with us, David, we'll go to you, next.
Hello, David Whedon, Mashpee Select Board Liaison to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Great. And special welcome to our newest member of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mike Milbury.
Karen Faulkner.
Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board.
Dennis Balzerini.
Dale Oakley.
And Rob Hanson.
And Brian Tobin, Town Planner.
And bless you, whoever that was. Anyways. Oh, it was Lynn, I think it was Lynn. So anyways, we have members of the public, so I think what we're gonna do is we're going to start off, it's 5 o'clock, we're gonna start off with our workshop with the Housing Committee about the Housing Production Plan. And we have a regular Planning Board meeting at 7:00. So what I'm hoping to do is at 6:45, take a pause and take public comments. Does that sound good to the three gentlemen that are in the audience? And the one person that's on Zoom? Okay. So, on the town's website, on our Housing Production page, there is a link to the brandy new 2025 Housing Production Plan. This effort to final, to update our 2018 Housing Production Plan started in 2023. And it's been a lot of work to get to this point. We now have one that's on the website. We're in the middle of a public comment period that ends June 6th. So please, everybody in town, take a minute, look at the plan and submit all the, all comments. There is a dedicated email address, which I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know if Brian, you do?
It's hppcomment@mashpema.gov.
And that's on our website. So, the Planning Board has spent a great deal of time on this plan. So, I was talking to Brian before, and Mike, I hope this sounds good, but I think that we should kinda open it up to the Housing Committee to kinda see if you've had time to look at the plan, what are your thoughts, any, any big comments, any detailed comments?
I have a few. Does anybody wanna make any general comments? I think this draft, I know that there was a prior draft last year, I guess, that was presented to and rejected. I think that this draft that is before the, that's being presented to the Planning Board accurately reflects the demographic, the town's demographics and the strategies and objectives that we have to do, very much in mind, keeping in mind the water quality issues that we have in town. And I think it was a lot of the comments that were submitted last time, both from the boards and from the residents, I think this, this draft accurately reflects those being taken into account. We have a few minor, I think, revisions, but I think the, I think the committee is fully supportive of the content of this draft.
I could add.
Paula?
Sure. I only got a copy last night. You could've come in. Lose it at the door.
I was knocking at your door.
Yeah, I didn't hear you knocking, and my dogs are just looking at you, they didn't care. But, you know, I've had a chance to, like, breeze through it, and it's, it's a very comprehensive document. You and I have talked about it before. I guess the, the thing to me that, that's kind of overwhelming is that we've had all this time to chip away at the affordable housing in this community and we, like, what this report shows is that we've barely budged. And that's, that's kinda frustrating as a brandy new member of the Affordable Housing Committee. It's like we've got this monumental task, you know, we've gotta eat away at this. I think somewhere in here I saw that if this plan is adhered to, that we might be able to get up to maybe almost a little more than 8%. And how hopeful are you that that will actually happen?
How hopeful am I?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm, I've created professionally 300 affordable units. You can do it. You can do it. You have to have monthly meetings, do you know what I mean? You have to, you have to continually make progress on your priority, you know? So, the, your committee was able to do that with what's known now as Leclerc Village. It was known for a long time as 950 Falmouth Road. And they just made progress ev, they met every month and they made progress every month. And it did, it did take the Chair a considerable amount of volunteer time working with the Town Manager's Office. So, you'll see in here, there is something about getting a staff person. I think that, that's something, that's one of the first things we should do, is try to get at least a part-time staff person, not just a recording secretary. You have a great recording secretary, right? But somebody to actually work 20 hours or 19 and a half hours a week on getting one of these things done. I thi, I think you can do it.
I'd like to piggyback on that because I think that's, I think that's critical. I think in the very first, I'd like to just call attention, piggybacking on what Paula said. The very first paragraph in the executive summary, it's kind of sounding like we're in 2015, not 2025. It says, "In 2015, the Town of Mashpee approved its last Housing Production Plan, which was updated in 20, and update, update to its 2005 Affordable Housing and Plan Production Plan. The town's made little progress toward the target affordability rate of 10% under Chapter 40B, and this time only increasing from 4.6% to 4.7% of the year-round housing stock." That represents 44 affordable units, well below the 2015 plan's goal of 160 affordable units intended over that five-year period. And that ends, I would suggest we add a sentence after that. It says, "In 2025, our affordable housing rate still remains at 4.7%, resulting in only 1/10 of 1% progress over the last 20 years." Exclamation point.
That's pretty pitiful.
That says, and then I, then I suggested that we had, "Clearly, we collectively need to make significantly more progress going forward." And I think that's how dramatic, how poorly we've, I mean, we've added 44 units in this progress, but the population of the town has gone up, so they've gone up in parallel, so we've made, made no progress as a percentage of our SHI. So I think it is, this is clearly saying, we need to make progress on multiple fronts. And I know the Planning Department, with the Department of One, doesn't have the bandwidth to support probably all the things that we should, be looking to them for help on.
Yeah, and it's not lost on me either that, that, you know, as the population has gone up, this is, this is a population that's noted in this report, it's, it's senior citizens, it's retired people, you know, who's, who's gonna work for them? Who's, who's going to teach our kids? Well, there probably won't be any kids in school. This is really, this was an eye-opening report. I think everybody in town should read it. I mean, and I say I have nothing against old people, I am truly a senior citizen myself.
Thank you.
Well, and that would be us.
Yeah.
Have to lead that initiative, but it's gotta be with a lot of people's attention. And I think that statement saying we basically made no progress in 20 years and water quality in Mashpee and the affordable housing continue to be two substantial initiatives that we need to make project on without any negative effect to the other.
I think Dennis has something to say.
I've been on the Planning Board for a long time. I think this is the fourth one I've seen of a plan. Nothing ever gets done. God bless you for putting all the time making this up. I'd like to see a hammer or a shovel go in the ground, put up a house. We've got a couple of things fighting us. We need sewer system, 'cause you can't put houses over here 'cause it's not sewn. So that starts building houses. And, and affordable housing, go buy a piece of wood, it's like $60, so I don't know where we come up with affordable housing. It's, it's cost like $500 a square foot to build a house, and that's a re, a reasonable house. So you're talking $800,000, you know, and maybe you get some $500,000, but I'm looking at people like my son stuff. They're not a fireman, they're not a policeman, they're not a teacher, they're just getting by with two, two incomes, they're making, like, if they make $60,000. They can't afford nothing down here. We're losing all the, all our young people, people that, like Paula said, where are we gonna get these people to work? They're gonna come over the bridge and take, we got vocational schools teaching carpentry, plumbing, they can't even get a job down here because the people are coming over the bridge and taking the kids that are coming graduate from high school. I, and there's not enough land in Mashpee either. We have very little land left, and the only thing we can do is, you know, they say refit some buildings, but we don't have much refitting buildings unless, like I mentioned years ago, go on top of Starbuck Sharp, we could put some apartments on top of Starbuck Sharp for workhouse forces. I mean, and anybody that works in the Commons, or, you know, with Roach Brothers, they get apartment there, or the nurses that work in the health center, they're having a hard time getting nurses. I got the, the fourth doctor for Mash, 'cause they couldn't afford to live here. They work for a year, they can't find a place. We do need affordable housing, and I like Paula's idea a couple of weeks ago, you heard, the small houses. You know, for, another thing, we gotta rezone. If somebody has two acres of land, you can give them like a tax credit, they could put two more houses on that two acres. And, you know, you gotta give them incentive to do that and keep them affordable, you know, deed of restriction. And you say, hey, for 10 years, you don't have to pay taxes on your house if you do that. Somebody even went one acre, they put a, split his yard in half, put a house. When I grew up in Boston, we lived on 5,000 square feet and there was houses like that. We had cookouts in the backyard.
We don't want that here, Dennis.
No, but, but, I mean, we brought some affordable housing, we gotta.
Yes.
You spent a lot of time in this and I feel like we're gonna get nowhere. It's been that 4% for 30 years since I've been on the board. And we did all these plans, all these plans.
Well, I think what Mary was saying, she was, she was giving us the, the lowdown on how we get this done.
I like that, what Mary said.
That we have to, to work hard at it.
Yeah, we've made some progress, right? We, we.
We made progress, but we gotta push this ahead.
We have some infrastructure coming in. This plan really is a huge bump up from the last version, from.
Can I ask you a question, though, about the, I see the different pieces of the plan that, that we're looking forward to. So for the Mashpee Commons in the next phase there, there's gonna be affordable units that are put in there?
So Mashpee Commons has a Chapter 40B Comprehensive Permit from 2007.
Right.
And I think it's there, it's permitted for like 381 units, 25% are affordable. They have both rental and homeownership. So, they've been back to the ZBA for whatever this, you know, the phase numbers change over time. But this next phase, they've, they've been to the ZBA for the final plans. I don't know if they, it's gone to the Building Department for permitting?
That represents like 127 potential affordable units? I mean, that's substantial.
Yeah.
But then, how many?
25% would be affordable.
Right. So how many non-affordable units will they have? I mean, that number keeps growing. I'm not very good at math. All right, so that number I know keeps growing, so as we're chasing it with the affordable units.
Right, so the denominator, the denominator on our percentage is solid for 10 years. Because it's the, it's the dicennial census from the federal government. And so, our, we were, we used to be over 5%, but the denominator grew. It's the number of year-round housing units is the denominator of that equation. And that grew, there were a lot of people, 'cause of COVID, that moved down here full time. So, more of our housing stock is being used year-round, so even though we have the same number of affordable units, our percentage of affordable units town-wide went down.
Right.
So that's, we, we, we used to be above 5, now we're below 5. So we're, we're, when Leclerc Village, the 39 units there go on the inventory, we'll be above 5 again. And that was a big deal, those 39 units.
Another thing, when you give a 40B, say they build 100 houses, 10 of them gotta be affordable.
25.
Got 90 houses.
Yeah.
Back on the market, so you're never gonna reach that 10% because that's just even that number off, you know?
That's if, if you're requiring 25%, 25 out of 100.
Yeah, then you got something.
You're making some progress.
Yeah.
So, so the places that are over 10% and well over 10% are urban areas.
Yeah.
With buildings in areas that are 100% affordable.
Yeah, that's.
So, don't get discouraged if we don't get to 10% because it's, it's still a measurement that we can use to do our progress, to measure our progress.
I think we're really looking at, at this plan, I mean, it's talking about, I think the dire performance record we've had to date is, is, is poor. The tools in here, I think it does talk about a significant number of properties that are potential, where we could make some gains.
Yeah.
There might be some regulation things that we can do. There might be some small unbuiltable lots that maybe we can get zoning approvals to put Habitat Homes on. There are multi-prime approaches that we're going to need to do, but I think we're going to get the support of, you know, this board and the Select Board on, on this plan.
Yeah.
And more than that is, is support for the resources that it's going to take to do that, the extra person, the Affordable Housing Authority getting a certain amount of money every year, the Affordable Housing Trust, getting some money every year, so when opportunities present themselves on the spur of the moment, we can pull that money to make it work without waiting until town meeting. And there's a lot of things that we have to do simultaneously.
I think, I've been thinking about this for the last four years. And where I am right now is, first of all, if we have town-owned land, that cuts the price down.
Yeah.
And if we're on a sewer service area, it has to be on a sewer service area. So, you know, maybe we can limit the parameters of what we should be looking at rather than looking at the whole, you know, issue of affordable housing. So, my thinking is, must be on the sewer system, preferably town-owned, if we have town-owned. And it has to be a small house. I think Paula's talking about tiny houses, and now that I know that there are good tiny houses that are not junk houses, that are built on a foundation with, you know, hurricane straps on the foundation, so it's not gonna blow off like a trailer would, it can be done. What I'm shocked to hear is that it's 500 bucks a square foot. I was using $450 a square foot, that was the last number I knew for something decent. So if you built a 700-square-foot ADU, that would be $350,000. So, Mary, you.
It can be done for a lot less than that. I've been.
Okay.
I have been doing some research and reading on that, and it can be done for a lot less than that. So it's not for.
You're talking about modular, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there are different ways of doing it.
Well, I, I think some people in town were objecting to it because of the safety factor. So can, I know, I threw this out last time and it, it didn't come back very well, about containers. I've seen some nice-looking container houses.
I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you on that.
Oh, good.
That's what I was just thinking about.
Well, thank you.
You use a container, it's not gonna cost $500.
They can look pretty decent.
And they look really good.
At the design.
We're gonna get in so much trouble for this, for talking about this right now, you and I.
Yeah. Okay, well, I mean, it's.
But it's the real deal.
If we can say, let's make some small houses. We have several different places that, you know, I've been looking at, I'm sure Brian's been looking at, Mary's probably been looking at, and I'd, I'd rather, you know, not even worry about the percentage and just say, look, let's just build 40 places or 50 places. Let's do the first year of 37 or more. Go, go beyond that. And then just keep going from there. And let's not talk about it, talk about it incessantly, let's just do it. It is doable, we just have to figure out what the parameters are.
And would you also consider that there, that a model that makes the land available but allows the, the people to build what they want? I mean, people may choose to build with a container, maybe people will cho, there are so many different places out there that offer to.
Paula, are you talking about a gift of land?
No, not talking about a gift of land.
Okay.
There are models out there where, you know, the, the land is owned and leased to the person.
Okay.
Builds the tiny home.
Give us an idea, if you've researched, that what, what these, now, these are safe, safe dwellings, correct? As opposed to.
Well, if I were building a dwelling for myself, yeah, it'd be safe. I mean, you'd have some parameters for it.
It has to be safe.
But, yeah, it has to be.
All right, so what size are we talking about? And you say prices, what, what have you seen?
The state, I think, or, well, the town regulation for an ADU is that it has to be under 900 square feet.
Right.
So that, that would be the parameter.
Okay, so under 900, 900 or less?
Yeah.
Over 300 and under 900.
Yeah.
400.
It can't be any less than 400.
Four to nine.
400.
Yeah.
So what, what prices have you seen per square foot?
I, I'm not a contractor, so I don't think I've, I've looked at per square foot, but certainly, you know, I've seen prices of, of like $250,000 and less to, to build the unit. So, I mean, it's something that can be investigated, and maybe we don't wanna micromanage these young persons, professionals or families. They, that's a doable home for someone who's maybe making $70,000 or $80,000 a year and can't spend half a million dollars on a house, but could spend $250,000 on a tiny home. Give people the, you know, give, give people the option. And if the town has a piece of land that we can dedicate to that.
That's what we gotta do.
It's very interesting.
That's what, that's what I'm suggesting we think about. That's, you know, wrap your head around a plan that doesn't, you know, doesn't tell people what they have to do, you know, with some parameters, obviously it, it has to meet codes.
Only thing I can see with that, Ron, is not in my backyard.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but like Paula said, town land, we have control of that.
Right.
So we could say, yeah, you could put your trailer here and make a nice-looking house and stuff, but if you try to stop putting them in neighborhoods, you're gonna have people up in arms.
You're still gonna get a butter stick next to that town land.
Yeah.
A piece of town land we were looking at now.
At least we don't, we have, you know.
It's still gonna happen.
Yeah.
But I, I think that, Karen, I think you're right. I think we're gonna have to look at an overlay of what areas of the town are going to be sewn, and we can look for town land within. And beyond that, though, we can still look at, at other existing home properties that we can take over, that are vacant, that are blighted, you know, existing properties that are not, that are, that are not on sewer, we could take over and turn into a 40B unit for sale, it'll be using an existing sewer, not adding to the sewer system.
Well, you'd have to put in an IA, and when that time came, if they came to be on the sewer line.
On, on, on a sale now, it has to be upgraded to a.
IA.
IA.
Yeah.
And how much are IAs, Brian, now? 40,000?
Depends on the system.
Well, I mean, average.
They're more expensive than regulars.
And it adds a lot of money if it's gonna be temporary until you get water.
Yeah, and it might be like, like, people object to it because.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a problem.
So that's a new idea, is somehow using town-owned land to lottery off lots that are rented to affordable households that then build their own unit, which they would have a long-term lease with the town. It's very complicated, but it, it could work. It is one thing to think about. So it's almost like a spinoff to the tiny homes community. I think we have tiny homes in here already. I, I don't wanna forget the, the GIS mapping of the, this has been bounced around a little bit, the mapping of the sewer plan, right? And matching it with lots that would be primed for redevelopment or development, and especially identifying town-owned land in those areas. Those would be the, to tell you the honest truth, those would be the quickest, right? If it was something that was gonna be on the sewer line.
Yeah.
And it was town-owned land, that would be the, that would be your quickest way of getting.
Right.
New units on.
So, Madam Chair, if we were successful in creating an overlay with, through the GIS that aligns with the sewer and town-owned land, whether it's tax taken and things, if we could kind of forecast what properties may be ideal for that and then promote and incentivize more use of the Habitat for Humanity, I think that could get you down to a $250 per, per square foot. And kind of work with them to where we're putting in applications on a regular basis to CPC to have that small parcels that are on, that have frontage along roadways and lie within the overlay that could be used to encourage Habitat for Humanity options and really kind of aggressively recruit people and promote people signing up for having a team of people or cohort. having a team of people or cohort that is willing to volunteer time towards addressing the affordable housing needs of the community. That might be a way to try to minimize the cost, and you wouldn't buy the land. It may, it might be good to kind of include language as a initiative, such as that. I, I don't know.
Habitat, it, we've done very well with Habitat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I was, I went to Volk's School, and every May and June, the carpenters, the plumbers, electricians would go do a house. We had the junior boss, because they're, you know, but we built the house, and they didn't pay no labor charges, and a lot of them got donated their lumber and stuff because for the school and for the city. We should look into the, we got two Volk's Schools on the Cape. We should look into the, say, would anybody, we got a piece of property here, would you be interested? We hire one guy that's a foreman to oversee the whole thing and have him to build a house, you know?
Like a Volk Tech school build?
Yeah.
Hi, bring the mic real close. Just so-
I did that exact thing in Connecticut.
Oh, you did?
The Volk School, and it was during the year. You had to understand, if you were the person that was having the home built-
Right.
That they only work on the home during the school term. So if a home takes, I don't know, whatever, good weather, four months, six months to build, you know, you could be talking about definitely two years to get the home built. It's worth it. Number one, it gives the students a live project-
Yep.
To work on. And number two, it is done to code. They also learn about code because you have the instructors there. In addition, I, I think this problem needs to be looked at because we're behind schedule, multi-pronged, which we all, I think, agree with. So Habitat, wrap them. Vocational schools, yes, and I'd be happy to work with a team here in contacting them. I'm already involved with the salon in bringing in actual clients for them to do hairdressing on.
All right.
Denise made a suggestion a while back on using any of the derelict and what, vacant properties, but they already have existing plumbing, electrical, needs to be upgraded, whatever.
But it's the-
But you're not starting from scratch, ground zero. So any of those properties that, I don't know, town buys or someone else where we could turn into affordable apartments, would you look one, the Stacquerys?
Yeah.
Riverbend, Riverview?
Zachary's, same.
Exactly.
Wigwam. We should buy that property.
Which one?
Right up the street here, Old Zachary's.
That, that's for sale now. I think it's like 3 point something million dollars.
There's like six acres in there, though. We got a lot of housing in that piece of property.
There is.
I mean, we should have bought it years ago.
If you try to do on a property like that, maybe the multi-level or get bigger bang for your buck.
Yep.
But when you talk about people in their own backyards, you have an acre, you have this, that, this committee or co-member is going to have to work with zoning because no one wants to go through, I've got a piece of property, I could put a small house, which Paul, I love them on my property, but now I have to go to all these boards, you've got a setback, you've got a side back, you've got-
Streamlining.
You've got a height, whatever, driveway, oh my God, don't put a driveway within 150 feet from another driveway that's over here. There is one that has to be put there, and it has to be put in a plan so that when someone comes in, I want to do the small house on my property, they don't have to do the work. Or guess what? Turn off immediately and pause.
Yes.
So these things need to be worked out before we put out for maybe review, even with them, the old committee, is it all together?
So we'll make sure that these ideas are all in the plan, okay?
Next question.
Yep.
Who is this, what's this technical person going to do?
What technical?
The one that's going to be hired.
Could you speak a little louder, Sharon?
That? No? Is it on?
I don't think the mic-
Over your mic down a little, like, no, the, the top, the top part.
Turn it-
No.
She's looking to turn it on, Dennis.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
No wonder, I thought I was losing my voice.
Uh-uh.
God forbid.
So, so what staff would do would be to support the action steps of this plan?
Do you know what I'm, I'm looking at?
So let's say, let's say the first step is to identify town-owned land for development of affordable housing. That staff person would be the one to, to prioritize that and make sure that the staff structure is happy with it and make sure that the board structure is happy with it.
So it's not hiring a new person?
Hmm?
It's not hiring anyone?
I believe it is, yeah.
Or at least a half a person or something.
Yeah. If, if we were to use existing staff, that would mean that the things that they're doing now, they wouldn't be doing, and-
I would like to suggest that really the town considers hiring someone in AI. And the reason I suggest that, there are many, many grants. I have asked the senior center, if we don't have money to do this or that, why don't we go after grants? And the comeback was, we don't have the staff to do the legwork and the paperwork to even look what's out there, let alone fill out and compile the data. When you look at what properties are available, overlays, AI, and I've seen it, can do it in 20 minutes.
Yeah.
We need that. And there is an individual here, born and raised in Mashpee, that is quite good at it, is working for the state government, has been before the federal government, attended worldwide conferences, and is currently working with Mashpee TV on some of the things you're seeing done there. And his commitment to this town means that we probably would get an exceptionally good deal.
Good idea.
Even if it's part-time. This, the data crunching and all of this overlay work and whatever is something that technology can do for us, and we need to spend our time on the emotional, the human If you want the contact, I'd be happy to give it to you.
That's a good idea.
Good points.
Madam Chair-
Did you have something?
The other thing is homeownership, affordable housing homeownership. So, you know, if we, I'm wondering if there's an existing mechanism or if we can utilize one of the mechanisms and empower it to be able to receive money to try to fund more additional affordable housing. Compiling a list of people that are ready to buy but may be short on buying a 500,000, the average house, house cost of 500,000 now is hard to find anything over, under 300, under 5. And so if we're able to create a mechanism that creates homes at a 250-per-square-foot home in their tiny homes and things, are there people ready to buy at, if there's opportunities like that to do so? And then ensuring that the money that's generated from those affordable houses that are built at a lower cost stays in the program to build additional ones. Now, now you have a funding mechanism that could actually create more, and if we were to do it as a vocational program, I think you could actually build homes at a really reduced rate and act, and then sell them, but having people lined up to where they're ready to take on the mortgages if we build something to suit and there's kind of plans that we have, maybe cookie cutter plans that are real, kind of loose, but not elaborate, and, and we can kind of crank those things out now. And maybe it's the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, that, that, that is used in some way or empowered to be able to help with that. I, I don't know if there's-
Yeah.
A way of doing that.
So the Affordable Housing Trust is an extremely powerful entity. For, for us to make significant progress, that entity would have to meet monthly. And that's an awful lot of time for those nine members. So it's, it's something to think about. A nine-member trust is awfully large board. And if it, if, if restructuring it would mean that it could meet every month, then that might be something to think about. As many of you know, the Affordable Housing Trust is the select board, the five members of the select board plus four other members. And the select board are just so busy-
Yeah.
That they, when they do meet as the Affordable Housing Trust, it's like that half an hour before their regular meeting. You know what I mean? It's not like a two-hour meeting that they can discuss plans and stuff. So it's something, it's something to think about. It would be a big change for the Affordable Housing Trust, but it needs to be like-
There is a new mortgage company out there. I just heard about it on the radio or whatever, that is offering mortgages at 1% or 2%.
Really?
And, um, don't hold me to that figure, but I was absolutely shocked. And I would think, if I like to piece together like a puzzle, if you could go to them and say, we're thinking about this, we've got your list of people who want to buy, we've got maybe Habitat or Vocational School to do one, and Habitat's going to do, and whatever, and a builder over here, could you work with us on affordable mortgages? Then you've got a package where everybody has buy-in, and everybody gets something out of it. So. Sharon, you were mentioning AI, and I know virtually nothing about it, but are you talking about artifacts? Yes. Working with Mashpee TV? Can you tell us what they're doing with Mash, I mean, what, what are they doing on the Cape? I, I really can't. You'd have to ask Chris. Chris would know. On that. It's something to do with, I, I'm not even going to get into it, but they are. If, I don't know if any of you saw Dilemma, it's one of the new programs on Mashpee TV. One of the first episodes was with Russ Wilcox on AI, and we hope to get him back for a second, an update, because now AI is really hitting strong. One of the things on that first show, a question was the ethics, and that we do need to be careful of in how it's used. But crunching data does not bother me. Anyway.
I, I do think, I did see the episode with Mr. Wilcox and how he's designed a program to actually help with permitting and things. And I think for this situation, it might be a creative way, it might be worth reaching out to him and seeing if he wanted to do kind of a sample test model specifically for the developing overlay to-
Come to a meeting and do a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, you know, something like that. As, as an initial instance, just to introduce it and see how to explore, and if there's a reduced rate for doing so, would it, it may accelerate what we're trying to do in creating a, a GIS layer. You know what I mean? I think it could be used maybe for that. You still have to go back and look at everything and, and validate all the information yourself. It's only as good as the data entry or what it's looking at. And so it's not perfect, but it can do some legwork. That, it's not a, I, I, I'm not completely opposed to the idea. It might be worth talking about or seeing a presentation. On, on the other, the Affordable Housing Trust and empowering that, if, like, I, I don't know, back to the looking at and identifying, and it would be informed by creating the overlay GIS layer, but empowering the trust to submit, we should be forecasting kind of identified parcels that we want to put before the CPC that could potentially be affordable, Habitat for Humanity builds, and that lie within frontage areas and, you know, you're not too far from utilities and things to where it's going to drive up the cost. And using the Affordable Housing Trust to kind of submit applications on a regular basis and forecasting, identifying just easy, no-brainer-
Right.
Kind of parcels that are small footprints and, and accelerate that and try and get some petitions in. Because the time, the sequence and the lead time to get funding through the CPC and town meeting and everything else, you're, you're talking about a five-year plan.
Yeah.
You only have five bites, four bites at the apple, you know, with advanced planning. So that's where I, I want, I'd like to see kind of, and maybe the, the second, the second person or half a person can help work on developing those kind of CPC applications once we identify some parcel, particular parcels to put forward.
Right.
Excellent suggestions. Madam Chair, if I may, just for a brief moment.
Mm-hmm.
I have some comments of a summary nation, nature that I think highlight a lot of the themes of what I'm hearing in the room, and I'm actually quite enthusiastic about everything I'm hearing in the room because a lot of it does in fact line up with the plan. And I would like to take a moment to dive into that, if that's all right. Before doing so, though, I was just hoping to, with, with your approval, of course, to gauge the room, because I do know we have members of the public here, and I wanted to see if any of them are interested in participating in the workshop.
So I was gonna, I, I, the last 15 minutes, I was going to open it up for public comment.
Okay.
Is that, would that be sufficient?
If, if you think that's sufficient time, I just, I wasn't sure of the folks here.
I do, I was gonna, I was gonna save the last 15 minutes.
Okay.
I mean, by raise of hand, you know, who in the public wants to comment today? So there's one, two, three. Okay. So I, that means they would have five minutes each. So I think that's pretty, and it's only because we haven't met as a group before. The Housing Committee and the Planning Board hasn't met as a group, so I started, I wanted to start with us. But yeah, no, I intend to save 15 solid minutes for them.
Awesome.
Okay. Now, you, you wanted to go, continue with something else?
I'd be happy to comment, but if other folks in the room wanted to still comment, I can, I can save mine to the end.
I think we should hit up anybody who hasn't said anything.
I might have to ask Chris.
All right. How about Robert Dale will go this way?
Good, good. Heading in a slightly different direction, affordable units. We have, as earlier discussed, a number of permitted affordable housing, something like 100 with Mashpee Commons. 300-plus buildable units, 25% affordable, and yet, why aren't they being built? They're ready to go because they can't afford to build them and make a profit. What can we do to incentivize those already approved, all the red tape has all been done, get them with a shovel in, in the ground and hammers, you know, going? I, I don't know. But half of, or more than half of the problem of getting a, an affordable house up is the permitting. These are all permitted, so you have, you're more than halfway there. All we have to do is encourage them to build them.
That's a good point, because the, the, it's listed in here, but I think your comment will kind of change the words a little bit, is to work with them to incentivize the, the start of the construction. Thank you.
If you have a ready waiting list, that should incent. In other words, i-if I'm building 10 units and you come to me and say, I've got six people that want and are already approved for the mortgage, when are you going to build?
Yeah, but that-
That's not-
The sale price may be what the affordable, you know, ceiling price is, but the build price may be higher to build it, or it, it's a break even and there's no profit margin.
Gotcha. There is where you've got to negotiate and a lot of working, even with who's supplying your supplies, your lumber, whatever. Can I work a, a deal for this much guaranteed? Again, that's in negotiation. I'm not saying it works, but I've had to do some difficult negotiations, and it came down- But I've had to do some difficult negotiations, and it came down to, do you want to work with us or not? And if you don't, then sit at home and don't build. Otherwise, you need to work at it, too. Go talk to your suppliers. You know, it's, none of this is going to be easy. Everybody wants what they want tomorrow. And, but if you don't give it a shot, all they can say is no.
So I'm going to go to Dale.
Yes, I think that focus should be given to, any land that's freed up should be put towards affordable multifamily housing, rental units. And I say that because even a starter home nowadays is $400,000. That's still unaffordable when you look at the cost of living and wages. So if we have more rental units that are truly affordable for young folks to stay here and work their way up to building a home, I think we can kind of balance the market, maybe, perhaps. And just, because we need to keep young families here to keep this town thriving, I think. So I think we should go with the, I mean, the rental units and any open spaces we can find. Multi-purpose buildings, refurbishing old buildings would be a great, great start. And I'm a big fan of AI. Big fan of, yeah, it's a big fan of AI. You can do a lot of work with not a lot of people.
Yeah, they're quick.
And you can get it done if you know how to use it. And again, it's not, it's not a substitute for actually learning, learning the work and doing the work itself, but it's a great help.
Dennis?
When you, when we get these grant monies and stuff, is it, can we preference Mashpee people get these houses? Or because it's grant money from the state, everybody could put their, you know, if you have a lottery. So somebody off Cape could put their name in here. That's, I'd like to see.
Yeah, it's local preference. I'll make sure it's in the plan.
Okay, that's what I.
Because the town should formally adopt that policy. So that if you, if you did have a number of units coming online at once, 70% could be offered to people who work, live, and have a child in the local school system. It's called local preference, and we should have a formal policy.
That's okay, good.
Thank you for bringing that. Anything else?
I was just, we should have did a DPC 25 years ago when I nominated it. That would have took, because we had the sewers. We would have built the sewers. We wouldn't have had none of this problem, and we could have stopped building houses, because there would have been sewers in town, and it would have been 100% cheaper than what it is today. I know Paula was there when, at the meeting, people were yelling at me, people were clapping for me, but it failed the town meeting. But only if we did that, we would have been looking pretty good now.
I think everybody at town meeting has voted with you since. I think, I think since then.
Dennis, I can tell you, as a journalist, I remember back in the day, I was working for the newspaper.
Yeah, you were.
And I covered Falmouth, and it blew my mind every time the town voted it down, and voted it down, and voted it down. I'm like, you need this, we need this. But people couldn't see the way it cleared. And now, oh, people are so upset. They got to pay to connect right now, and they're so upset.
So I'm going to get a little technical. I'm hoping everybody has a plan in front of them. Do you want a copy? I can share with you.
I'll share.
Why don't you pass that over to her? So, because you're going to get a reading assignment. So this plan is really, 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 really intense. And. They're going to, oh, they took it? Okay. You can send that one over. That's what I hear. All right. So anyways, on the table of contents, this has a lot of information, because you have to justify the need for affordable housing, and you have to study the market. And there's all sorts of, you know, data from the US government in there and stuff like that. But where it really, this plan was really tailor-made into a clean water plan is starting on page 47, barriers to development. So take a good, take a good look at that and make sure that we're not missing anything. All these ideas that are coming up, they should be, if we've got a good plan, listed, starting on page 61 to, I think, 86. So it's housing production plan goals, and then the strategies. So I'm making lists of everything that everybody is saying. But, you know, don't get too bogged down in the stuff going before the goals and the strategies. You want to make sure the goal of, you know, local preference and the goal of affordable rental, multifamily housing is mentioned in there. I think they all are, but help me out. And then the strategies are things like, you know, use of town-owned land, that kind of stuff.
Is there any place in here, I know we talked about it at our previous planning, Affordable Housing Committee meeting, where maybe we're going to have Brian was going to tell us where the, what of the town-owned lands are actually accessible to the sewer. And we even talked about that one parcel maybe could be connected to the school sewer. And you were going to check into that? Did you learn anything about it?
That is now going to be in a strategy. If it's not already in there, we're definitely gonna, and once those strategies are set, then you prioritize it, right? And then you hire your staff person, and you assign that work to the staff person. So it's all going to fall in place. Yep.
It's all going to happen.
I'm gonna, now I'm involved and you're involved. It's going to be good. I'm going to pass it over to Karen for any final comments. You like the clean water part of this plan?
Yes, I read that, starting on page 47. And the problem before was, it didn't really integrate affordable housing with the polluted waters. And, you know, and what we have to do. And it's really a, it's really a tough situation we're in here, but we can do it.
We can do it. And we're not going to throw the flow-neutral bylaw out the window.
I have one question. Has anybody seen Habitat for Humanity Development? Or is it always a 1Z, 2Z?
I'm going to address that. So, the town has been very, has a great, strong partnership with Habitat. We used to identify tax-taken lots, lots that were unbuildable, and donate them to Habitat for Humanity, and they'd build a house. The way they're structured right now, they like to do 12 houses at once. They'll do six, but they like, they found a sweet spot. 12 really works for them. So they're looking for a larger area. I did float the idea that their next build, they're looking to come back to Mashpee. I did float the idea of, what if we found you several lots throughout the town, or you did them all at once, and they're thinking about it, but I'm not sure. But that's what they stand, they stand now. I mean, they will go, come to a community with just one house being built, but they'd rather come to your community and do a whole bunch all at once.
Karen, how does the economics of that work? If we have the land that we give them.
Typically, yeah.
What's the cost?
So typically, you know, and this is one of the action steps you could prioritize, is have Habitat come in and give you a kind of update about when they're, when, on their schedule, they'll come back to Mashpee. Typically, towns either give them money to buy land or donate the land. So they get the land for free. Either we give them the money, or we give them the land that we own, right? Then they start to permit and identify community partners, like neighborhood associations and churches, and maybe even a town hall, somebody to help them sponsor the house, help with fundraising. And typically, they come back to the Community Preservation Committee for another grant, maybe $70,000, maybe $100,000 per house, to cover the costs of the materials. They do pay their staff. They have a licensed site construction person, site supervisor. And they have found that they do better if they pay their subs, their electricians, their plumbers, et cetera. It just, it just goes along quicker. But the people that are selected to own the homes, to buy the homes, have to volunteer between 250 and 500 volunteer hours. So they're in there actually building it. And then groups, carpenters, retired carpenters, go in and help build. So.
And then do they purchase?
They have a lottery. They have a lottery to select the household. And it's almost like years in advance, because that household has to help build the house.
Yeah. If they're, if they're selected and they work, they supply the labor, do they still purchase the house?
They get a mortgage.
So they get a mortgage, which would probably cover a lot of the building supplies, I would assume.
Usually, their list price of these houses, kind of depending on how many bedrooms they are, et cetera, they go from, you know, 200 to 250,000, which is a reasonable mortgage going.
That's affordable.
That's a sweet spot, right?
And then they resell it at a discounted rate. The other thing is Habitat keeps involved in all of the houses. They form neighborhood associations. So if there's one road with five houses around it, there's somebody that actually gets paid to come and plow, right? They have a neighborhood association that pays for those kinds of things. Like if the fence falls down, they go in and fix the fencing. They mow the lawn of the common area. And Habitat has found that that just keeps the peace. So. Hey, Mike?
Hello. Well, Bob, the first thing that you talked about was somehow getting this already permitted plan underway. Let's face it, it's about money, right? It's about cash. You're going to have to give somebody a break on taxes somewhere down the line. But the size of this plan, for me, makes it attractive. To get that many, you're talking about 12 houses here or 12 houses there, and I will take it. But if you can put in that number of units, and it's ready to go, and it can't be funded properly, I think you've got to take a real hard look at how to do that. But the other stuff, it'd be great. But I think one of the easiest things we can possibly do is identify the potential pieces of property that suit the sewer systems, and make sure that we can get in a conversation with the town about how we can utilize those.
I'm going to keep going around the table. Come right up to the mic, so everybody at home can hear you.
I appreciated the thoroughness and the ambition of the plan. But I became very concerned about the comments in Appendix B. And you mentioned the flow-neutral bylaw. The first I ever heard of it was in reading this report. But when Andrew Gopleib said that if we don't comply with that, we could end up owing $30 million in taxes, I had an anxiety attack.
We all did.
And so I'd like to, at some point, discuss that further and find out how we're going to avoid incurring that big tax.
I think that's the big change. In the 2025, this current plan ahead of you, in front of you, address that comment. So if you were to look at the, and I can get you the, I can get you the one that we redlined from 2024, you'll see that that was all taken out. That was all taken out.
So that's not going to be an issue?
No. Nope. And if it somehow is still in here, I need to know, so we're going to get it. We are not looking to change the flow-neutral bylaw to accommodate housing development in town, because we have to make progress on our water quality in town. If we, if we somehow get some type of, you know, capacity to do more housing that's not quite affordable housing, fine. It doesn't pollute our water, fine. But we got to clean up our water. We have to make progress on that first. That's my, that's my thought. So leave the flow-neutral bylaw in place, leave the nitrogen management plan in place. It's approved by the state. It's in use. We're funding it. We're installing it. Let's make some progress on that before we would ever go back to look at that stuff. The 2024 plan had a lot of market-rate housing in it, right? Not just affordable. We've drilled that back. We've pulled that back dramatically to have this plan concentrate on the affordable units, which is 37 units per year. Maximum, you know. Does that give you some more confidence? Okay, good.
Anxiety decreased.
And the other really good letter in Appendix B is the one from the Environmental Oversight Committee. It explains, it explains how this plan should focus on affordable housing to meet the greatest need in the housing in town. It does have some wiggle room, and, you know, once in a while, you'll see diversify housing choices. Well, that's, that's things like, you know, our cluster subdivision by law allows for single-family detached homes. Well, we might want to look at that to see if it would allow for multifamily, right? So that's a diversity in housing choice, but it would still fall under flow-neutral. Do you know what I mean? It would still, that cluster subdivision wouldn't be able to give more flow than it could before we changed the bylaw, because flow-neutral is there. That's, if all pistons are firing right, that's what will happen. Yeah. And if it is, if it is an area that, you know, they want to do even more, well, then they have to come up with the nitrogen management plan, you know, to augment it. They have to come with a system, either they have to be on searing, or they have to come up with a system that will bring their nitrogen load down to something reasonable, so it can fit under flow-neutral. Yeah, we're not going to lose that financing. Anything else?
I don't have anything further to add. I just want to commend Town Planner and the Planning Board for doing all the work that they've done. There's a significant amount of improvement to the housing production plan that I think folks within the community are going to get behind. And I think they can, this is a much better document, I think, at this point in time. You addressed a lot of the concerns that I kind of was familiar with and was harping on, but I'll leave it there.
And then, Mike, and Diane, did you want to say something at this time? Denise, sorry.
I don't have much to add to everything that has already been said. I do see a difference between the 40B housing and the affordable housing. On the whole, I don't like to see a lot of programs and deed restrictions and things like that. And as someone who's lived on the Cape and owned property on the Cape for most of my life, owning real estate is a way to make money on Cape Cod. And I think these deed restrictions and things like that can kind of stifle that. And when you're not making a lot of money, which you're basically not on the Cape, real estate is a way for you to grow your personal wealth. And I'd like to see taking the properties that are derelict in the town and letting people do something with them. Cooperatively, working with the town, maybe getting some kind of assistance to do it. To create affordable housing, not necessarily 40B, that's going to count towards whatever quota they've come up with for the town.
That's not in the plan. We'll put that in the plan.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, almost like a home buyer assistance program.
Yes, so that you might be getting a buy-down on your down payment, help with like interest cut.
Right.
Being able to lease your land. You can do a 99-year lease.
Yep.
And just get into the house. But those kinds of things, kind of nibbling around the edges. I'd like to see also making it, encouraging people to live here, as opposed to having a summer house. I think the residential exemption is a great thing, and I would boost it right up to 35% and let the rich people pay, so that you can get some money to encourage people to live here.
Yeah, that's right. The residential, the residential exemption isn't in this plan.
Yeah, I find it a bonus. I mean, I certainly wouldn't move to Sandwich and pay their taxes. And I don't think people coming from off Cape understand Sandwich taxes are so much higher than every other town's, because they're not. higher than every other towns because they're not from here. So I would just look at things like that that are a little different, but not.
You keep thinking. You keep thinking because we'll add them in there.
Okay.
So, Mike, I did want to open it up to public comment now.
What about Paula?
Paula's spoken.
And this one thing?
Okay, you have 30 seconds.
One thing we're missing here is jobs. We gotta get some, like, remember when they used to have the, where was it, near Betello's, August? When you used to go by there, it was probably 300 people, when clothes coming out. But we gotta get, we don't look at the jobs. We gotta get some better jobs than you working at McDonald's or something. But I mean, that's kind of catch 22 with, you know, because people don't want to live here and go 40 miles off Cape, come back, you know? But we never look at getting some kind of jobs in here.
Right, we didn't link it to our economic development plans. That should be our goal. That should be one of our goals.
All right, okay, good.
Thank you.
That's all I had to say.
Bring back August.
Yeah.
Any of the room knows what we're talking about.
So, let's see. So I think I need to get a mic at the podium so that people can, Paula, can you put one of those mics up on the podium and then, and if anybody has public comment, please come up. State your name. Your street, your street, it's for our recording secretary.
Hi.
Good evening. Michael Perkins, 94 Palmer Road. Couple of, couple of points I just want to make. I've, I've read this plan a couple of times, I've read the previous plan, I've read the one prior to that. This is a much better plan. So people should be feeling good and congratulate about that. That being said, I think it's an extremely ambitious plan. And I don't know if it's represented as such because the state requires certain goals to be identified. But I think that with 37 homes here, 185, 185 units over the next five years, I think is extremely ambitious, particularly in light of the, you know, the whole water quality issue that we have. I know that the, you know, work is underway on the sewer. I think I heard tonight, somebody said, may have said, we'll put these on the sewer line. I think that ought to be a requirement, that if we're gonna, we ought to prioritize the ones that's gonna go on the sewer line before we do anything else so we don't further jeopardize our water situation. Redevelopment, I heard Zachary's, I was gonna mention Zachary's. I think that is a prime opportunity for the town to consider for redevelopment. And lastly, I don't think there's, I don't think I saw anything in here with respect to this being a regional problem, not just a Mashpee problem. So we have Falmouth, Bourne, Sandwich, Mashpee, all trying to address the same problem throughout the Cape. This is a regional issue. I think I've read over the last 18 months or so, Joint Base was willing to offer 600 acres to the region for affordable housing opportunities. I think something like that ought to be identified and captured in here. And lastly, going back to the quantity of units that we're going after here. I think, you know, we talked about, there's a lot of discussion about all the work and we don't have people to help out. Look how long it's taken to get this plan done. Look how long it took to get the traffic study done, done on Old Barnstable Road. I think we ought to aim small, miss small. Identify, prioritize your biggest opportunities and focus on that instead of a shotgun approach. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Don Allen. I live in Palmer Road in Mashpee. Lived in town about 10 years now. And echo much what Mr. Perkins said there, that I've been to the community engagement meetings for the housing production plan, I've read the plan. I'm not an expert on it, but it's much improved from earlier versions. And the addition, the revision's done and the update is much appreciated, I think. But I think still, the question I have is, I think the number one issue facing this town is water quality. And I'm encouraged that we have this open dialogue of this challenge or the contention between water quality and housing development, affordable housing development. And I believe the number one issue is water. And I think that with the continued degradation of the water quality of our town, it's paramount that we do not progress projects development that has proximity to lakes, rivers, abeyments, or wetlands. And I think it's paramount, as Mr. Perkins said, is any project should be tied to access to searing. Otherwise, we risk further degradation of our water. And again, the second point I'd like to emphasize that Mr. Perkins brought up is the, encourage the focus on repurposing existing facilities, existing infrastructure, whether it's Zachary's or other. I don't think we've really had a good inventory of that, as I think some of our colleagues have mentioned today. Take an inventory of what's out there. With a lot of infrastructure in place, needs to be upgraded, but it's in place. So same criteria, probably access to sewers. That's all. And I thank you for your attention and continued good luck.
Thank you.
Especially to all the new members of the committees.
I think I saw a third hand original, all right, go ahead, come on up.
Good evening, committee members. My name's John Pitts, I'm on Hogan Drive. I just had one question concerning the housing production plan. And it's concerning the goal that was in previous versions of that plan regarding concentration of affordable housing in specific sections of town. So the previous version had a very specific goal that affordable housing should be diversified across the town. And I think that's a, it's an important principle. It comes from the federal level, from housing and urban development. And it really is to the benefit of the residents who live in affordable housing because they're able to be exposed and diversified across town instead of being concentrated in one section. So I think it's a valid goal, and it's been removed from the latest version. And actually, I had the same comment a year ago when the, when the housing production plan was being revised last year. We had the same kind of discussion and the committee agreed with me that it should be reintroduced into the revised plan, but this latest version, it's missing again.
Can you do me a favor?
Yes.
Because you reference HUD.
Yes.
Can you send us that documentation? That would really help me figure out why it went away. Maybe there was a misunderstanding in the terms. Do you know what I mean? I want to make sure that we could still do multifamily housing if we adopted that goal.
Sure. Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Like a multifamily building could be considered a cluster.
Oh, yeah.
So, but I think that if you get me the HUD stuff, then, those are like standardized words we can use.
Yeah, my understanding of it was it wasn't related to multifamily housing. It was more related to areas of town.
Right.
And whether it's single family or multifamily, it's a good principle not to concentrate affordable housing in one section of town.
Right. So I think it was just a misunderstanding, to tell you the honest truth. Because I think if we're short 300 units, nobody is gonna say, we want that all on one site. Nobody here would support that. So we need to express that in the plan.
The discussion last year was related to, at the time, the town planner was defending the removal of this goal. And the reason was that he wanted to have affordable housing all centered around town services like shopping and supermarkets and things like that. But I'm not really sure if, how valid that is because most residents of affordable housing have cars, so they really don't need to walk to the supermarket. So I'm not, I think maybe we could look into that a little bit further to see if we really need to put affordable housing all next to, you know, supermarkets and shopping centers and retail areas. So I just wanted the committee to maybe reconsider that. I'm not sure why it keeps getting removed, but if there's a reason, maybe that could be a discussion point at the next meeting or something.
Yeah, you get me that stuff and I'll.
Okay, I will. I'll send that in.
I think it was just a miscommunication or a mistake.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And one other comment I had, I was really encouraged to hear your discussion about Habitat for Humanity Homes. I think that's a really good solution in Mashpee, especially for the residents of affordable housing because, especially if the residents have children. It allows the children to have space to play, it gives them a yard, just like all of their classmates in school will have. And I think, you know, multifamily housing is good in some situations, but for families with children, a single-family home or a duplex home with a yard is really important. And so I really think we should think about that when we discuss proposals with very dense, you know, bedrooms on small lots of land. I think it's, it would be difficult for the residents, and especially the children, without having open space to play. So that was all I wanted to mention tonight.
I'm just writing it down.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Don. So we have time for one more.
Ah, yes, well, I bid my hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out Lynn.
Lynn, I apologize. Okay, Lynn Barbie, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lynn Barbie and I'm on the Zoom. And I wish I could be there, but given my conditions, I couldn't. But so a couple of things. For years, I went to the Affordable Housing Committee meetings. And repeatedly on the agenda, the chair, when Alan Ismais was chair, he invited Mashpee Commons to come and report on what progress they're making. And nobody ever came.
No.
And so I think that that's actually a really decent thing to consider is, if you're going to the ZPA, why don't you come and talk to the housing people and tell us what's going on and see if there's, you know, things that we can come up with, maybe it's, well, for example, they did that sort of dormitory thing above the, you know, the organic market for people in, working for the community health center. There may be other ways within Mashpee Commons, more low-income affordable units can be placed up above whatever. But I do think it's the town and all of your committees and all the work you've done deserve to hear actually from Mashpee Commons, what is going on, what is their plan, what is the holdup, and is there anything that anybody can do to sort of address that? That's one thing. The second thing I wanted to say is, I love tiny houses. I think they're a wonderful idea. However, I think they are, they can be, if there's a small piece of land that you could put three tiny houses on, couldn't you also put a small two-story building of one-bedroom apartments? And instead of having three bedrooms, you'd have six bedrooms? And I say that because I'm trying to think efficiently as well. I said, I love tiny houses and that, maybe a place, maybe a place and a unique reason to do that, but if there's a small piece of land, can't we put a small apartment building or two-story building and have one-bedroom apartments that would be, give us more units? And the last thing I want to say is, I keep reading about how many of the younger generation are not ready to be homeowners. They want to rent. At this point, I don't know, given economic instability or whatever. I never owned a home until I retired from my job when I was 60. So I think the idea of having rental units can be, it should be really at the top of our list because that's where particularly single people or young couples without kids, I agree, kids, it'd be great that kids have a yard, but some of these small apartment buildings have yards, that that may be an easier access to have rental units that people could sign up for, to say, yes, I will, I want a rent at a park and have one of those smaller buildings, two-story buildings with one-bedroom apartments that are for rent. I think all of the ideas we talked about tonight are good, but I did want, I know there's been a lot of stress about, stress on homeownership. And I think there's not, it's not a magic wand at this point in our history and our time and what I think a lot of young, single people or young couples necessarily are requiring. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm reading the whole, the whole thing once again. I've read it all once and I'm reading it again.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, so the time for the end of our workshop has arrived. I believe that we meet again on June 4th. Is that correct? So we're gonna have another workshop, June 4th, starting at 5:30 here. So I hope you can all attend. I believe that your committee meets the day before.
6:30, right.
Right? And that's, what time does that start?
5:30.
At 5:30?
I had 6:30.
Or is it 6:30? Is your?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So on the 3rd, it's a 6:30 start, and I think you meet here. And then we have a joint planning board, housing committee meeting the next day on the 4th at 5:30. Public comments are due the 6th of June. And the Housing Production Plan 2025, make sure you pick the 2025 one, that is on the website now for you to look at. If you have any difficulty seeing that, please contact Brian Tobin in the Planning Department. Brian, are there any more comments from you before we, any technical stuff from you before we go?
No, no. In the interest of time, I'll just quickly say I am enthusiastic because a lot of the comments, both from the public and the Affordable Housing Committee, are themes that are reflected throughout the plan. So, exciting.
Right. Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Before you, Paula, can I ask you a question? You mentioned the 6-4, you mentioned the 6-4 meeting. On the timeline, I saw a 6-4 planning board meeting.
Yep. So, so we'll meet together as a workshop again on 6-4.
It didn't say workshop, that supposed to be a workshop?
Yep, just like this.
So I don't believe it is scheduled as a workshop, Madam Chair. I believe it's just scheduled as a planning board meeting.
But can we have one at 5:30 on the 4th? I have it down as a workshop with the Housing Committee.
It's another joint meeting, essentially.
It's another joint meeting.
Even if it's not a workshop.
If you want to, we can make the adjust, we can make that adjustment, but it was, my understanding is it was originally scheduled as just a planning board discussion on the...
Oh, I think the Housing Committee should come in that, that, on the 4th. I, yeah. The Affordable Housing Committee. I think you should come back on the 4th at 5:30 and meet with us. Absolutely, because I, oh, you need to adjourn, Paula. Yeah. I just want to report back to you on all your comments and where they are in the plan. And if you have something, in the meantime, if you have something, please email it to Brian so we can work on that.
Please email it to hppcomment@mashpma.gov.
Good plug.
All in favor? What about the other committee, stands adjourned?
No, we stay. We're still convened. Thank you so much.
Brian, all the, there's a lot of.
We're gonna take a short recess.
On appendices. Not important to go over. Do you want all those too?
I think stop off later, I was eating. Okay. Was the TV not on?
Okay, welcome, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board here Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. We started at 5:30 with a workshop with the Affordable Housing Committee about our draft housing production plan. Now we'll go on to the other matters in our, on our agenda. Just want to remind everybody that we're being live broadcast and recorded. We're being broadcast live on local channels 8 and 1072. We're stream-lived on the Town and Mashpee website, www.mashpma.gov/channel-8. There is a Zoom link for this meeting. The meeting ID for Zoom is 954-5464-2188, sorry, 2138. So that meeting ID is 954-5464-2138. And the passcode is 125442. Again, 125442. It's on our agenda, which is online and was published at least 48 hours before the start of this meeting. We will accept public comment by Zoom. You have to raise your hand if you're zooming in. We will do the best we can to notice your raised hand. We have a couple of staff people from Mashpee TV and from the town that are good at noticing that. So just be persistent if you do want to speak. Let's see. First order of business, we have meeting minutes from April 30th, 2025. I looked at them. Did anybody have any comments?
No.
I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes of April 30th, 2025 as presented.
So be.
Actually, Madam Chair, there were, again, two versions of the minutes in there. There were just some light technical edits that I made regarding the department comments from the last meeting.
We can't hear you.
So there are two versions of the meeting minutes in there. I put in a red line version that, again, just made some light technical adjustments for the department comments. So my preference would be for the board to vote on that red line version.
I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes as amended by the Town Planner.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Typically, people who didn't attend the meeting abstains. So we'll have Michael and Dale.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Rob, would you like to vote in their place?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Okay. Seeing the appointed time has arrived, the Chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is DPF Mashpee LLC. The location is South Cape Village Shopping Center on the corner of Route 28 and Charles Street. The request is a special permit modification to construct a 2,500 plus or minus square foot restaurant with 44 seats, 38 indoor and 6 outdoor seats in the Building G pad site pursuant to Sections 174, 45.1 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. So I'm gonna read the public hearing notice into the record. This notice is given pursuant to the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, regarding the public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, on Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, at 7:10, in the LaCoye Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to review a special permit modification application from DPF Mashpee LLC, property owner, to modify the South Cape Village special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,500 plus or minus square foot restaurant with 44 seats, 38 indoor and 6 outdoor seats in Building G pad, located on the corner of Route 28 and Charles Street pursuant to Sections 174-45.1 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw at South Cape Village Shopping Center. Assessors map 81, blocks 4, 16, and 25. The proposal seeks to reduce the size of an already approved building to accommodate a smaller tenant. This notice was submitted by Mary E. Wagan, Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. The publication dates were Friday, May 2nd, 2025, and Friday, May 9th, 2025. And I would recognize the project proponent.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Latanzi Spalding and Landreth in Orleans and very pleased to be here this evening. Joining me this evening, seated at the table all the way to my left, is Karen Johnson of Brand Street Properties. They are the operators and managers of this shopping center. Next to Karen is Matt Eddy, who's our civil engineer from Baxter-Nye Engineering and Surveying. And then seated in the front row behind me is Tom Scott, who's a principal at Scott Griffin Architects, which is the project architect. And you'll hear from Tom in just a moment as well. I think all of the board is very familiar with this site, so I'm not gonna spend too much time orienting you to the property. We're here this evening to talk about South Cape Village. It's an approximately 25-acre site on Route 28, Donna's Lane, and Great Neck Road South, sort of bounds it. This shopping center has been the subject of significant prior permitting. I carry around my notebook that shows all of the prior permits from the town, the Cape Cod Commission, and DEP. And as you can see, there are over, I think there's like 40 tabs with different permits. And in fact, some of you will remember, we were before this board back in 2021, seeking a modification for this particular building location that we're here to talk about tonight. So I'm gonna quickly talk about the permitting history a little bit. The town originally permitted in, and I showed this on the screens, if you, if you can see them, a special permit authorizing a 160,000-square-foot commercial center on this property. That original special permit was back, issued back in May of 2001. Since then, there have been numerous modifications of that permit, which is still in effect. In addition, on the Cape Cod Commission, from a regional perspective, this development also went through Cape Cod Commission Development of Regional Impact Review, which also authorized 160,000-square-foot shopping center. That Cape Cod Commission, the procedures are a little different than town permitting, but there have been two, what they call major modifications, and numerous minor modifications at the Cape Cod Commission. In addition, that Development of Regional Impact permit at the Cape Cod Commission is also still in effect. There have been a couple of extensions of that permit. The last one was issued in 2022, which extended it until 2027. But then, of course, last fall, the state issued a Permit Extension Act that automatically extends permits an additional two years. So the Cape Cod Commission permit, again, which is different than the town, the commission requires that you complete construction within their timeframe. The town requires that you start construction within the timeframe. But the Cape Cod Commission permit is still in existence now until 2029.
Okay.
So going back to the original 2001 special permit, again, it was the board approved, the town approved, 160,000-square-foot commercial shopping center. It designated in that original approval that there were gonna be eight building areas, which the board called A, and the plans called A through H. That original special permit also approves certain site improvements. It created setbacks for the development, parking, and it, your decision and the Cape Cod Commission decision also required certain mitigation actions, which have happened. So currently, and the orientation is a little bit different on this plan, Route 28 is on the left side of the graphic. Currently on the site, there's about 147,000 square feet of floor area, so less than what has been authorized. There are seven buildings on the site, Buildings A through F and H. So Building G doesn't exist and, yet, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. And obviously, significant site improvements, including a wastewater treatment facility. This graphic shows Building G in the original approval, circled in red. So it's at the corner of 28 to the south, Charles Street, which is now Charles Street, formerly Shell Back Way, to the right, and then South Street running sort of to the top of that red circle. As, and you, it's difficult to see, but as was originally approved, Building G was to be constructed at 10,000, with a 10,000-square-foot footprint. In 2017, when we appeared before the board seeking permission in conjunction with the Home Goods permitting, the pad area where Building G was approved was slightly reconfigured. So during the Home Goods permitting, 11 additional parking spaces were added in the vicinity of the Building G pad site. And as a result of those parking spaces, we requested, and the board approved, permission to shrink the size of future Building G to accommodate roughly a 6,000-square-foot footprint. And you can see that on the inset that I've circled on this graphic. Then in 2021, we were again back before the board relative to Building G, and this is the last time we were before the board relative to this property. And in September of 2021, the board approved buildout of Building G with a design for a retail building that accommodated up to two tenants. The 2021 approval was for a single-story building with a footprint of about 4,860 square feet. The resulting approval, it obviously hasn't been constructed, but had it been constructed in 2021, would have resulted in about 152,000 square feet of building area on the shopping center as a whole. In addition, as part of that approval, the resulting number of parking spaces would have been about 780, and the board approved reduced setbacks for that building development as part of the 2021 special permit modification. I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Eddy to walk through the next couple of slides that show the proposed buildout of Building G. And Matt, I can just flip when you need me to.
All righty. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxter-Nye Engineering Surveying. So the site plan that is up on the screen now, so reduced footprint of the new Chipotle restaurant of approximately 2,400 square feet, again, much smaller than the prior footprint that was approved. Very similar layout. I think this is fairly straightforward. The parking layout in front is very similar to what was approved previously. Slight reconfiguration, handicap spaces. to what was approved previously. Slight reconfiguration, handicap spaces is provided. To the east end of the building, just off of South Street, is the loading dock and screened refuse area. Crosswalk connection is being modified coming across South Street to the building. And, you know, from a overall site layout, that's pretty much it. As Eliza had pointed out, and you may recall back in 2021, the setback that's been reduced, I'm sorry, increased from the building to Charles Street, you know, was a fairly significant increase in setback. If you recall, there was a lot of discussion about the elevation of that prior building, the height of it next to Charles Street. That's all gone away now with this building footprint being much smaller. We're able to grade that slope up. The exposed face of that building, which you'll see on the architectural elevations, is significantly reduced, and a fair amount of additional landscaping is provided upon that slope. So I think it's a nice improvement. Do you want to shoot? Yeah, there you go. This is just a comparison plan that was done. This was something that Brian asked for, actually. I think it was a good idea. Just kind of shows a relation of what was previously approved, which is what you're seeing shaded in yellow here. That was that 2021 approval. What you now see shaded in this light orange color is the new Chipotle building. The red that you see is just the prior, excuse me, layout of parking, et cetera, versus the current proposed, which is in black. And you can see all of this is fairly the same. Again, building much significantly reduced. And the loading dock area also reduced. You can see the corner of the loading dock was very close to the intersection there. It's now pulled back to this location there. So. And then if you want to, yeah. And then the landscape plan that I was just describing, you can see that this whole slope here has been laid back, graded up, so that, again, this exposed face of the building facing Charles Street is much less. There's a small stone faced retaining wall proposed here for a nice little terrace landscape area. This is the outside patio area. And then part of the plan review, there were some comments on the landscape plan. I believe Karen made some of those as well, which they were good comments. We have modified that. There was arborvitaries that were proposed up in this corner. So any tree, all the trees up in the corner here were relocated. This has all been changed to shrubs and grasses. The sightline distance from South Street down to the intersection is unobstructed. And we then also modified, I think there was some pear trees that had been previously proposed, which are not allowed anymore. So those were changed to dogwoods, so that, those changes have been made as well. And then I think from Ed's comment letter, the only other item was the sleeving the water lines adjacent to the grease trap, and that has been done as well. That was also a comment by the Health Department at plan review.
Can you show me where the pear trees are?
I'm sorry?
Where were the pear trees going to go?
They're gone. They're no, they're no, the pear trees were here. They're now dogwoods.
Oh.
We had proposed them, and we've modified that.
Okay.
So they're no longer proposed. And then, as Karen was just pointing out to me, one last item, there was also a mention of some bollards being placed at the, in front of the patio area. So we have added two bollards on the sidewalk in front of that outside patio area. So.
That's to protect anybody from driving into the
Yeah, no, it's good, absolutely.
People sitting on the patio there.
No, it's a good comment for sure.
What are they made out of?
I'm sorry?
What are they made out of?
They have, there's a steel post inside. There's going to be a decorative bollard, I believe, is how it will end up. I mean, if you've been out there along, is it Joy Street? If you look at those, they have, there's a decorative cover over those bollards. So they'll, it'll be a nice aesthetic looking bollard.
And they're on one of these sets of plans right here?
The detail for the, I mean, a standard bollard is in the details, but the architectural detail is not.
But it's on C3.
Yeah. So Madam Chair, if I may, for this board's convenience, what you have in your packets with the standard civil sheet set for engineering plans, you have first and foremost, the initial plans that were submitted, both to the Plan Review Committee and the Design Review Committee. Collated with that in sequential order are the revised plans. So you'll see, as you head towards the back of the packet, you'll see an email from council to the applicant referencing the revised plans, C3.0 and 3.1. So that replaces the initial 3.0 and 3.1. Then after that, you'll again see another email in this, in this instance, from the engineer for the applicant, and that's referencing the revised utility plan, C5.0, where they put the sleeve on the water line for the grease trap.
Just real quick, if you'd like, I'll point on the screen, on both screens here. It's right there on the revised 3.0. That's where the bollards are placed there. And then for people looking at the screen, they're right there.
And then after that, there's another email from council for the applicant showing proposed signage plans. So the sheet set in front of the board actually flows in nice sequential order, and it shows the history of revisions that have already been made, both as a consequence of plan review and design review committees, as well as the applicant working by and through council with the planning department. So it should just streamline nicely for this board.
You have a burning question?
Yeah, I do.
All right. Dennis, go right ahead.
Okay, Matt.
Yeah.
Coming up off of 28, going up Charles Street.
Yep.
On the right hand side, I see a sidewalk. On the side where the restaurant is, there's no sidewalk. But when you go, one of the plans, when you're on 28, there's a crosswalk going across before you get off to Charles Street for the sidewalk there. But how come there's no sidewalk going up?
Dennis, if you look at the screen here, and if I'm following you right, you got the crosswalk here, sidewalk there, there's a walkway all the way along here.
Oh, that's where the sidewalk is?
Yeah, that's the sidewalk there.
All right.
And then off screen is, there's that set of stairs that goes up that slope.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a sidewalk, so people could.
Yep.
Let's continue. Let's keep walking. We're walking up, we're walking up, and we want to go over across.
Across.
Charles. No, what is that? South Street.
South Street.
Right? You have to cross over a loading area.
Well, there's actually, this, this grade differential here, so there's no sidewalk right there. Your sidewalk is here, and you'd go up those stairs. That's your circuit, if you were down, if you were walking from down here.
You, so if you, if you go up, and there's a little sidewalk along, kind of.
But this sidewalk here, yeah.
Right? So if you go, you go up, right there, right there, it's a loading area.
Yeah, but I mean, they have to have a connection. That's the way we have it, like over in front of the Walgreens, it's the same. In front of, back of Home Goods, it's the same. And then actually, in the back.
I can see that being a little bit busier.
It is.
That's a busier walking.
That's what Decadonis is.
I'm just wondering. Yeah, and I could see families really enjoying this restaurant and enjoying the areas across. Can you put a little sign, you know, like caution, loading area?
Yeah, we can add.
That's a good idea. You know, like, so the pedestrian, it's like a little sign for the pedestrian warning.
Yeah.
Just because I know loading trucks are going to back in.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you should put a little rumble there, so they know that, that it's a pedestrian way.
Yeah, we have, there's a tactile there, but we could add a tactile.
Tactile there, so the drivers always know.
Yep.
They remember, oh yeah, that's a pedestrian way. And a little sign, I see it at certain restaurants, like, it's for the pedestrians.
Yeah, just put a little, yep.
Caution. Okay. Thank you.
One more question, Matt.
Yep.
When you're 28, right in the beginning there, that strip there, are you going to put that in?
Say again, Dennis?
See the strip there, the, no, right there in the middle, come over. It looks like a pencil. No, it's in the middle of the road.
Center island?
Yeah, center island. My brain was getting slow. I couldn't think. That's not there now, is it?
There's not an island there now, is there? Oh, that there?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, is, is that island out there?
No.
Well, that's, that's a carryover from old plans then.
All right.
That's not going, yeah, that's, there's no, there's no proposed work.
Okay, so that's not going in then.
No proposed work in here.
All right.
I've only, I've only gone in there a thousand times.
Sure, that was actually, wasn't sure if it was there in there. I don't think it's there, but I guess.
That's a, that's a carryover from, from long ago then, is what that is, yeah. You'll see that on every sheet.
Okay. So we can put an X in it then?
Yes, I'll, I'll make sure I take that off. Thanks for pointing that out.
I'm going to ask Tom, our architect, to come up and walk you through the design.
All right.
I think it's there. Thank. I hope it's okay.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Tom Scott. I'm the principal architect at Scott Griffin Architects. I'll just run you through, there's a couple of renderings here. And, and this plan didn't make it into the deck, so it's basically a floor plan.
I don't think they can hear you. You might have to hold the mic.
Hold the mic?
Yeah, right up, yeah, right up.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, that's much better.
Okay. So this is the, the floor plan. I wanted to start with this, just to show how the restaurant is laid out. The, the main parking field is here across the front of the building. And the main dining area is this portion of the building here. All the food prep occurs in this area. Public restrooms are here. Then there's a single door, there's a double door for the main entrance, and there's a single door that goes out to the outdoor patio. There's six seats out there, and as you've heard, there's 38 seats inside the building. And then there's one more door in the back, which is a receiving door and a utility door. So that's the basic orientation, which kind of informs the, the elevation. The building itself is fairly simple Cape Cod design with some steep gable roofs, a small mansard that connects the gable roofs and, and basically shields any of the equipment on the roof. So you won't see any of the.
Good.
The equipment.
Thank you.
The upper portion of the building is a cedar shake, similar, similar to this picture here. Then there's trim boards around the perimeter of the, of the structure. And then the mid, mid half of the, of the building is a lap siding, hardy plank lap siding. And then we have a knee wall at the base of the building to kind of anchor the building and, and kind of replicate some similar details throughout the center. There's a canvas awning over the, the main entrance. The signage is illuminated with goose neck light fixtures. And again, it's a fairly simple, simple design. The, the size of the building obviously has been reduced to 2,400 square feet. I think there's one other rendering. But on this one, you can see that we've concealed all of the, the trash and utility area of the building with fencing. So that, that covers up that loading area. And where we may have some utilities actually mounted on the building, like a gas, a gas meter or electric meter and that sort of thing, that'll all be housed kind of within that area. So that'll all be concealed. In this picture too, you can see the two bollards that were added to protect the outdoor dining area.
Yep.
They're way off to the right there. You can kind of see them. And you can see the dining area to the right as well. Then we have one other view. How do you move this forward? Oh, did, okay. This is from the road. You can see the patio, outdoor patio area, the stone wall, and then the lush landscape along the, the edge of the building. And at the distance, you can see the, the fence enclosure around the, the trash area, but it's, it'll be nicely landscaped and kind of hidden by the, the landscape in the area. So it's fairly simple design, but I think it, it comes off quite nicely.
How many parking spaces do you have? That's why.
I have a slide on that.
Okay. So you got to share what the parking space is there?
Yeah, it's based on the overall plaza, but I'll let.
Yep, that's actually my next slide is kind of a summary of some of the building program. So as you saw, we're proposing, it's a single restaurant tenant, a single tenant, which isn't allowed use under the 2001 special permit. The footprint's about 2,500, so the resulting total after construction for the plaza as a whole would be about 149,500 square feet. So still less than the 160 that's already approved for the site. This layout does comply with all of the setbacks that the board has already approved as part of the original special permit decision. So we're not asking for any new relief as it relates to those setbacks. Now, to, to answer your question, Dennis, in terms of parking, the parking meets the by, actually, it exceeds the bylaws requirements. So two spaces are being, existing parking spaces are being removed to allow for these proposed improvements. But if you look at the parking section of the current bylaw, if you look at this as a shopping center, it would require across the whole center, 619 spaces. We're proposing 779 spaces. If you took every use within the shopping center separately and calculated their parking generation, 762 spaces would be required, and we're providing 779. Again, that's the property as a whole. If you look just at the parking that's close to where this building is proposed, because those are the spaces that'll probably be used for this and immediately surrounding businesses. So if you look at those uses, including the proposed Chipotle, 55 parking spaces would be required. Chipotle would require 14, and then the immediately surrounding businesses would require, what is my math, 41 spaces, resulting in 55 being required for these businesses. In this immediate area, there are 61 parking spaces, plus seven on South Street, so 68 parking spaces available. So we do meet and exceed the bylaw requirement as it relates to parking. And it, go ahead.
So you only have one handicap parking space in front of the building?
One handicap right in front.
Is that what's required?
Yes, yep.
There's, there's actually four within that parking field right there.
I'm thinking your building.
Correct. Yep.
I'm, I, I don't know. Could you, could you add another handicap parking spot?
It could have been made.
I noticed that. I thought the, so you have two pickup, right, takeout. Then you have a handicap with the van.
Yep.
Could that next one be a handicap too?
I mean, it can. I mean, I think there's, there are, you know, I mean, there's already more handicap spaces provided throughout the plaza also than are required. Basically, per AAB, 15 to 25 parking spaces. So if you just had a standalone building that had 15 to 25 parking spaces, that's one handicap space. We only need, we have 14 spaces that are required. So, and it's just, so, you know.
Well, you can always change that later, right? I mean, there's no special design.
Well, I mean, the, the one thing that happens, if we add another space, a handicap space, we could probably work it out, but there's grades that have to be.
Oh, okay.
Considered. And they, they have to be a maximum of 2%.
Okay.
In all directions across. And as you know, as you start to get towards.
Okay.
Go towards 28, it slopes off, so it becomes a little bit difficult. I mean, we could probably work it through, but that's why we placed it where we did and.
I, I think, I think I'm not going to go down that path anymore.
I was just curious.
I mean, if you have a lot of people complaining, you'll deal with it.
Exactly.
Right? So.
I was just thinking of the, the age of the people on the Cape now.
Right.
A lot of handicap people.
But they'll let you know. So.
That's why you need those bollards.
That was a really good idea.
Let's hope, let's hope they don't ever have to be used though, right?
I'm almost done with our presentation, and then obviously we welcome your questions. So I, I just wanted to update the board where we are with the Cape Cod Commission, because this came up in your consulting engineers' comments, and the town, your town planner also asked about it as well. So under the Cape Cod Commission DRI approval, they've also pre-approved the development of building G. The way the DRI works is that when we come forward with a project, we are required to submit plans to the Cape Cod Commission staff for their administrative review and approval that what we're proposing is consistent with the DRI decision. And this is the same process that we did in 2021, and they did issue in 2021 a preliminary certificate of compliance, which basically allows construction under the commission decision for the larger building. We have, I have had a phone conversation and multiple emails with the Cape Cod Commission's chief regulatory officer. We have submitted the same plans and materials that we submitted to you, to the Cape Cod Commission staff. Their review is ongoing. We have, as part of that submission, requested that they issue either a new or amend their prior certificate of compliance to allow for this project. We'd be happy if the board wanted to make that a condition of its approval. We'd be happy if the board wanted to make that a condition of its approval, that that certificate issue has to happen anyway before a building permit can issue, but if that one, if you want to include that as part of your decision too, that's fine with us. And, you know, these comments that we're receiving from you tonight too will be helpful. We can update the commission on this discussion and your process. So our request this evening is, if you look back at the original special permit condition two as modified, indicates that before a building permit for any structure within the project beyond A, B, C, and D, which were constructed first, detailed site plans have to be submitted to the planning board for review and approval by a vote of four members at a regular meeting after said plans and drawings have been reviewed by the design review committee and their recommendations have been forwarded to the board. We have presented this project to both design review and plan review committees, incorporated their comments, as Matt mentioned, into the revised plans that you have before you this evening. And again, I just have the bullet point showing sort of the history, the evolution of Building G, and how it has decreased. So initially, it's proposed now at about 2,500 square feet footprint. That's 7,500 square feet less than you've originally approved, about 3,500 square feet less than you approved with the Home Goods approval in 2017, and about 2,400 square feet less than you approved in 2021. And my last slide in conclusion is, we suggest that this modification meets your special permit standard. It complies with the applicable dimensional and parking requirements as set forth in the 2001 decision of the board and the park, the current parking requirements under the zoning bylaw. There's no adverse effect on public health or safety, no excessive demand on community facilities, and in fact, probably less demand than have already been permitted and mitigated under the original special permit. There's adequate infrastructure for this development, no significant adverse environmental effects. This land has always been permitted since 2001 for development in this pad G area, no noise impacts, significant noise impacts, and no detrimental, significant detrimental effects to the town or area. So I'm going to stop there and ask if you have any other questions of our team. So you, do you want to go to board members first, or to Ed Pesci first?
Oh, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah. That's, so everybody in the audience, if you're here to comment on this, what we usually do is we hear from the, the project proponent, then we hear from Dennis. And then we go, we go to our board engineer, and then our town planner, because sometimes they cover our questions, right? And then we go to the planning board members, and then we go to you. Does that sound good? Okay, Ed, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. For the record, I'm Ed Pesci of Pesci Engineering, consulting engineer for the board, and I rarely get to start or to report a new project review this way, and I'll say that based on the testimony tonight and the documentation received from the board, excuse me, applicant's engineer, Matt Eddy, and the drawings that, and documentation he's provided, as well as the brand street letter from Karen as well, documenting responses to my original comments, all of my previous comments have been satisfactorily addressed.
Lovely. I love it. That was easy. Brian, do you have any comments or questions for the project proponent?
Yes, just a few. I did notice that Ed addressed, or most if not all of Ed's comments were addressed. There's just kind of one minor technical matter along those lines. I believe that there was an additional response after Ed's last letter, so it may be wise to just get a follow-up written statement from Ed stating effectively what he just stated now for the record.
Which one are you referring to, Brian? Are you referring to the email?
There's one that's actually not on the packet, because it was received on May 20th, and the packet had already gone out.
Okay.
So.
And that is, just so I'm following you, because I'm sorry, I may have missed that, but I did get the last, let me just look at my collection here. I thought the last email I sent out was May 16th, saying thanks to Matt Eddy, to yourself and Hannah and Mary. Thanks, Matt, all responses look good, but I still recommend a planning board receive some kind of documentation regarding the Cape Cod Commission's review and approval, which has already been discussed. Was there something else? What are you referring to exactly?
Oh, I just thought that there was follow-up correspondence from the applicant on May 20th that addressed some of your items as well. It's not in the packet.
I don't have it in front of me, but I'm happy to be corrected, otherwise.
I think what you're referring to is, I had sent our response that Karen had prepared to the Cape Cod Commission.
Oh, that was to Jordan.
And that was yesterday, so it was to Jordan, just so the Cape Cod Commission had the benefit of what Ed has already received. So there's nothing new that we submitted yesterday. You've received everything that...
And I did notice a number of Ed's comments had overlapped with some of the comments at the plan review committee, as well as the design review committee. And I believe all of them, or most of them, were addressed. There were a couple I just wanted to confirm were addressed. I do recall, and it should be in the minutes for the packet, that our DPW director had raised some questions about sediment control plan. I recall the pear trees being removed and that being addressed, and I also recall the sleeve for the grease trap from that meeting. But then, I guess, the last potential issue that I just wanted to make sure is addressed, and these often get addressed post-planning board approval, but pre-issuance of building permit, where some of the fire department's requests, and I'm not sure if those were shown on the revised utility plan. But, for example, having a Knox box, having FD accessibility to the sprinkler and utility room, and then doing alarm testing, so.
Yeah, I think those fire department comments would be part of the construction documents that, on the architectural plan, as part of the building permit submission, that's where those would show up.
Okay.
And that would go through the, and the fire department would review that as part of the...
Post-planning board approval, pre VP issuance, yeah.
And where does the sediment control plan come in?
And sediment control's on the plan, there's silt fence on there.
So I saw that comment after I prepared my letter, I saw, I got a copy of the design review, and I looked at that, and I went, wait a minute, there's already silt fence on the plan, and on sheet 4.0, C 4.0, the perimeter silt fence erosion control, and the details are on the detail sheet.
And silt sacks.
Typically, we wouldn't want, you know, a construction entrance and everything, but this is already a built site, so we don't need a separate erosion control plan, in my opinion.
Okay, got it.
So I think it's satisfied. It is there, it's a good question to ask, it's a good thing to ask. It doesn't leap out at you, I didn't have to find it, I didn't, because it's one of my thoughts, it's one of the things I go through every time I review, but it's on the plan, it's there, and, you know, it's addressed.
Ed, could I ask you a question? On your May 15th letter to town planner and us, you wrote in paragraph six, under stormwater management, "The roof runoff will be directed to a new leaching basin with crushed stone and is designed to accept runoff for the 100-year storm." Did they do that? And how do you do a leaching basin that you can say is good enough for a 100-year storm? Just curious.
So, Matt, why don't you answer that? Because I could answer, but you're the one who did it.
That's part of our design. That was, that was part of the stormwater narrative. It's, the leach pit is designed for just the roof runoff, it's a small roof area, right, about 2,400 square feet. So a single leach pit handles 100-year storm. We go through a stormwater calculation, you know, using what's called TR 20, we use a software called HydroCAD, and that's, and your size, you look at the amount of runoff, and you're able to go through the calculations and size.
The runoff's not going to be huge.
It's very small.
Yeah.
Correct. So it's, I mean, the stormwater is, well exceeds the original design. They put in all the stormwater facilities as part of the original design, there's stormwater facilities under the parking lot, those are all shown on the grading plan, C 4.0, I believe it is. There's stormwater out front along 28, there's a bioswell, this is underground stormwater. The original plan, when it was a 10,000-square-foot building, excuse me, had the roof runoff for a 10,000-square-foot building going to the underground stormwater management area that's underneath the parking lot.
Yep.
Obviously, that building's not going to that at all, so that's overdesigned now, which is fine. And then the building now is down to 2,400 square feet, and because of the topography and the layout of the building, the building's further away from where that stormwater management is, we couldn't get it there via gravity, as far as, you know, making the water flow there. So we propose a separate leach pit drywall just to the, would be the west end of the building, and just, you know, they'll collect by gutters and buried roof drains into the leach pit, and its size, and it handles 100-year storm because of the size of the pit and it's such a small roof, it's...
Because that's becoming an issue on the planning board now, the 100-year storm.
Oh, that's becoming an issue?
Well, it's always been an issue, but it's coming up on another matter.
I mean, standard, you know, we always, we, as an engineer, you look at the 100-year storm, you want to make sure that you're passing it safely, is the, is kind of the rule of thumb, I'll say. But DEP stormwater policy, the storms that you look at, is defined on DEP stormwater policy, are the two and 10-year storm is what they want you to control, and then you look at passing the 100-year safely. We actually look at now the two, the 10, the 25-year storm, and the 25-year storm is really a basis of a lot of the design. And then we also look at the 100-year storm, and just make sure that there's not any detrimental effects by 100-year storm, and a lot of the sites, and especially, we have good soils here, a lot of the times, we're able to control 100-year storm onsite and infiltrated, you know, so.
So there's a sophisticated model called HydroCAD that just virtually, AutoCAD has its own model as well, but a separate piece of software that virtually all of us use that model the size of the storm. So the peak you're seeing is during that storm event, obviously, it rains, when it starts to rain, the runoff starts to accumulate during the rainfall, it keeps going for 24 hours, and the runoff really starts to collect, and then finally, the rain starts to drop off, and that's why the peak drops off. It also drops off because, in this case, the leaching basin is leaching, is discharging to the ground and recharging to the ground. So, you know, Matt, Matt, his team did the right thing, they pretty much did two things that they do, and Matt's right, we look at the 100-year storm for safety, but generally now, we're starting to adopt, we should contain the 100-year storm, we should model the 100-year storm, make sure the level that rises inside the structure, whatever it might be, isn't bubbling out of the structure, onto the street, or into the parking lot, or something else. And that's what he did. And, and they followed the, where also, virtually every community is starting to adopt this, the NOAA Atlas 14 rainfall event. So it's not the old USDA-accepted policy of a certain amount of runoff for 100-year storm. It's now a new rainfall event. It used to be approximately, for this area, seven inches. The National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration has looked at the effect of climate change, and the NOAA Atlas 14 precipitation model looks at that and tells us, based on all the stuff going on lately, here's what the 100-year storm really is now. And it's 7.51 inches for Mashpee. So that's what they use for modeling it. So they kind of have the belt and suspenders look at the way we model things, so it's the state of the art. So, and Matt only needed to show me the 100-year storm, I didn't need to see the 2, 10, 25. So he only sent me the 100-year storm, right.
You might see it tomorrow night.
So, he knows that's what I'd be looking for, and that's what, that's what they sent in his, in his narrative. So you've got to remember, not only Matt, but myself, we've looked at this four years ago, same thing, only bigger. And now it came in smaller, I wasn't worried about it at all, and then finally, you know, looking at all the data, it matched up with my assumption, so that there was nothing really to worry about, there's additional parking and so on.
Okay. Going back to Brian, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just two other quick comments. One is, one of the issues that I had raised in the plan review committee was the setbacks, and I wanted to be sure that the plan was fully compliant there, again, because the original special permit dates back to 2001. And the counsel for the applicant walked me through the various conditions of the various mods for the special permit, and so the plans are compliant along those lines, so the board does not need to worry about that. I also agree with the use analysis, and, you know, a restaurant is allowed, both under the special permit and, I believe, under our current zoning as well. So, no concerns there. And then last is, Ed had raised the GPD issue, and I don't recall if Ed had gotten back to us in writing, but I also had Zach confirm that there was sufficient flow capacity, that being our health department head. And it's not in your packet tonight, because it was received on the 19th. But his comments were effectively, there's enough flow there for several restaurants, so.
Great. Rob?
I've got one comment and one question. First, my comment was, I love the fact that Building F doesn't exist anymore. You took that out, it opens up that area for easier parking and navigating through that area. So that was, hopefully, it was a plus for the other businesses too. The question is, you put two ballards in to protect diners in, on the patio. You have a knee wall that runs the whole length of the building. Is that providing the same safety that the ballards are providing for the diners outside? Is that structurally adequate? Or, and it prompts me, the question is, the incident that happened at the Apple Store off Cape, where a car drove through, you know, the front, front of the building, big glass windows, and I believe they had also a knee wall there, and killing somebody. And now they have ballards for the full length of the building, or yo. So it will prevent another incident like that. So the question is, does the knee wall provide the same safety as the two ballards for outside?
So I'll answer that one. The knee wall definitely provides a level of protection, but probably not as strong as the ballard. The ballard is anchored into the ground, probably three or four feet deep. The knee wall is just sitting on a foundation wall, and it might be pinned with some rebar, but it doesn't have the same anchorage that the ballard would have. So the answer is, it provides some protection, but it's not the same level of protection.
And the reason I bring this up, because of the other incident, but if you look at the parking lot, it does give a, quite a long runway for somebody that wants to do damage.
Wouldn't that depend what type of car it is too? If you have a nice, big Jeep or something, a pickup truck, that's not going to protect anything. But if I have a little, little car, that would stop it from going to the building.
Probably would stop a small vehicle, but not a, not a large car.
You also, you know, when you're, you know, the drive aisles are oriented parallel to the building, right? So when you're coming down the drive aisle, you're coming in parallel to the building, it's, you know, when you're turning into the spaces where you'd go, be coming into the building, and again, you should be, again, you can't control how people drive, but you should be going very slowly as you're pulling into a parking space. Plus, you have, there is the curb in front, obviously, you can hop a curb if you're going too fast as well. But I mean, again, there's, I mean, normally, under, you know, normal limitations for any site design, any building like this, along any parking lot in any town, city, or whatever, you're not typically putting ballards across all, you know, the front of all the buildings, understanding that, you know, accidents can happen, and, you know, when somebody, you know, somebody's not driving, you know, the way they should, but...
Well, but, Rob?
Just some resistance.
Sorry, just to point a clarity there, and apologies if I wasn't following, your concern is for the remainder of the building, or your concern is for adequate protection in the outdoor seating area?
No, for the remainder of the building.
Okay.
And I see more and more structural barriers in front of buildings and pedestrian ways, even with parallel through streets in that area. If you go pretty much any downtown area in Europe, all the main shopping streets are, got ballards all along to prevent and safeguard pedestrians on the street or in the buildings. So it's, it might be something that we look into, maybe not for this project, but safety's good.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions or concerns. The presentation was great, very concise and clear, so thank you. The presentation was great, very concise and clear, so thank you for that. No, I mean, it checks out with Ed, checks out with Brian. And again, nothing jumps out in terms of like impact on the community, so, yeah, it looks good. Thanks.
Dennis and me.
All right with me, I like the design of the building, really nice. And are we going to go to the grand opening?
We always get an invite. We always get an invite to those things. I'll just go real quick, you know, people are very concerned about the wastewater and the water quality in town. Can you just summarize briefly, Matt, what the wastewater system does there?
I mean, it's, it's actually not under my purview, but I'll, I'll let Karen speak to it and I'll fill in if I can.
Karen Johnson, Brand Street Properties, we're the managers, operators of South Cape Village and have been for many years. We initially took over when we removed building, it was actually called F2, and, and to utilize that parking area more efficiently and frankly, the spaces that were there were, were not rentable, they were too small. So we also worked on the home goods and at each iteration of change at South Cape Village, we had to look very hard at the existing onsite wastewater treatment facility. And if you recall, the former town planner, Tom Caddala, was very vigilant about the total nitrogen at five, which is unique to Mashpee in that DEP who initially issued the permit for this, set it at 10 and that's the state standard. So you, no, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. What we did do as part of an upgrade to the system is completely redesign the treatment facility so that it meets a total nitrogen of five.
That's great.
And I, yes, and I, I am happy to report that that consistently has been met. I will admit that there have been a few and you get hopefully the monthly DMRs. There have been a few months here and there from an operator perspective where we've gone over that, but we've worked very closely with the original design engineers, Weston and Sampson, with DEP on the renewal and then with Whitewater, the operator. So we, we do keep a very, very close touch on what's happening out there. And I'm sure you're also aware that there's life, deep, life at Mashpee, which is a residential facility that also is part of this system. So we have a number of users out here, it's not just retail, restaurant, also grocery stores can be difficult to manage from a wastewater perspective. So I'm, I'm very happy with the results of the system, our whole team is. We spent a tremendous amount of money to upgrade the system and to be in compliance with the five, even though it was not mandated.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. Karen, anything else?
No, I think somebody had commented about this facade being kind of stripped down and no, no windows, but when you have the landscaping that looks like this, it looks very nice.
I discussed the proposal, my two youngest sons are very excited about the restaurant.
That's all we need to know. I think we have a pretty strong customer base in this restaurant, so thank you.
So I'll open it up, anybody from the public would like to comment? So what we, anybody online? I don't think so. Okay. So what we usually do is we keep the public hearing open so that the decision can be drafted, sent to you to look at. The shortlist of conditions is the preliminary certificate of compliance is issued by the Cape Cod Commission. You, you did say you would modify the plans to add some texture to the crosswalk and little signs on either end of that crosswalk, on either edge of the loading pad. That's the only kind of modifications I, I heard.
And also potentially just remove that proposed island that was never actually built or was a carrier.
Oh, remove the traffic island on, along Route 28.
We looked at Google Earth, well, and it's there. There is an island there.
I thought it was there.
I know. I wasn't going to question them, but it is there.
It is there.
Good.
Because you feel, those islands are important, because you feel safer.
It's one of those things, you go by all the time, right, and they're like, you know, I'm not sure.
I thought it was there, yeah. But I, I use that exit a lot.
We'll go by it tonight, make sure.
Dennis was just trying to throw a little curveball at him.
I'll drive right over tonight, watch. Oh, there's me.
So if that's okay with you, that's what we'll do.
Let me, I could ask a question on that. Is there a need to keep the public hearing open? We can certainly work with staff on the decision, but.
We usually do because of the plans aren't finalized and we like to see them. We like to see those little notations on there and actually, we actually read the decision, like as a group.
Okay.
So that's what I'd like to do.
Okay. I mean, you know, if that's the preference of the board, obviously it's your, your process.
It usually works out really well.
So they come back June 4th, right?
So when we come back, we would just indicate to you where these small planned changes have occurred.
We'd have time, you'd have time to read the draft decision, we'd have time to read it.
Yeah.
We usually close, then vote and sign.
Okay.
So what's our next?
June 4th, right?
June 4th, yeah.
Make a motion, we continue the public hearing to June 4th at 7:10. Is there anything else?
Not at 7:10, no.
Okay, I take a second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. So I see a couple of members of, of the public in the audiences, if anything on the agenda you wanted to talk about? Okay. All right, you guys are good? I think you're, Jack's on the agenda, okay. All right, so.
Last call.
Will you put the lights on?
The lights went out.
I know, it looks dark. All right, so Board Engineer Reports, Project Reviews and Inspections. What do you got for us, Ed?
Okay, couple updates, everybody. First of all, the Osprey Court project has proceeded a little bit the last month and a half or so. All the infrastructure is in, the roadway base material is down, the roadway subgrade was, was prepared, roadway base material is down, we're weeks away, couple of weeks away from paving, getting the binder coat down and then all the final work will start to take place. They'll start the final landscape, they'll bring the, the frames and grates and covers to grade, those kinds of things will start to happen. But right now, everything looks great, we've inspected it up to date and it looks fine. Island Pickle started construction, you probably, some of you may know. So I introduced myself to the Raycon Construction Management Team a couple of weeks ago, I drove by there tonight. It looks like they were, they had the, I want to say that Friday, the 25th I was there or the 24th, April 24th last, I, I can't remember exactly, one of those days, but they had started excavating the foundation and putting in the footings. So roughly 20% of the footings were in. So they are ways away from putting any site work and any drainage in, but that, that Island Pickle project is well underway. When I drove by there tonight, they, earlier tonight before the meeting, it looks like they're continuing, I saw concrete forms stacked up next to the excavation, but there's no other vertical construction whatsoever. Country Club Estates, Mr. Marsters and that project up Old Barnstable is proceeding, the final phase of work is finishing, just finished, I want to say yesterday, pretty much yesterday, I got some additional pictures, I was there two days ago, meeting with the contractor who was finishing some detention basins for the last phase that they finished last year. They paved, finished paving last year, but they hadn't finished building the detention basins and the discharge, they were temporary. Now they're all pretty and loomed and ready to be seeded. So that, that looks pretty good. They have started staking out the next phase of work, which would basically finish the loop. And I walked the site a couple of days ago, like I said, I had some questions about grades, they are modifying some of the information. Two days ago, they gave me a, a set of plans to, I'm sorry, yeah, two days, no, yesterday, sorry. Feels like it was two days ago. Yesterday morning, I got a set of plans that shows some of the grade changes. I did mention to the contractor, to speak to Mr. Marsters, that it was time for us to reconvene about the entrance.
Oh, good.
Yes.
And he agreed and said he would do that, so honestly, I think nothing will move forward till I send him another email. So Dennis, I'll include all of you on that email, just because I think it's time for us to sit around the table in Brian's office, kind of go over where we left off and what needs to be done.
Yep.
I, I, I think you should just send an email to Dennis and Brian.
Okay.
And I think that we should delegate this task to Dennis. What do you guys think?
Oh, yeah.
Or Rob, do you want to join that meeting?
Oh, I wasn't paying attention.
The Quashtet Valley Country Club, you know, that intersection?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, I was joining that.
Because you lived there.
So I think, I think we should have a mini working group. You guys meet and figure that out, how's that?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Okay, so I will, I will, I will take action and move forward with that. Also, finally, in preference, in preparation for tonight's discussion with Mr. Moran, I, I ran by Aquay Highlands, just to take a look at it, to see the current status. The last time I did that was late April, early April, excuse me, April 2nd. Yes, April 2nd and the systems look fine, the maintenance of the basin was being done at the end of Carriage Road and the, the roadside slopes look pretty good and today it looked even better. It's all filled in, things starting to look really nice out there, obviously with the growing season starting and, and things starting to sprout. So I'm, that's it, that's all I have for, for that update.
Okay. Thank you. All business, Housing Production Plan Update, I think we did a good job tonight, we will, we shall continue. And Brian, you're okay with that date being another workshop with the housing committee, right?
Well, I think maybe something we're just discussing, because I know there, there was a lot of thought put into the timeline and I believe there's one planning board meeting only and it's scheduled for that date prior to public comment closing. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not okay with it, I just want to make sure that we've considered kind of all the variables that went into this timeframe, so like.
I had it wrong on my calendar, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So.
But I think we should meet with them one more time. So maybe that's a good date, because we vote on it on the 18th.
Okay. How would you want to then do it for our agenda, because the, the way the overall timeline is set up is that the planning board has its own solo meeting before the public comment period ends, then the public comment period ends, then the planning board has another solo meeting before, I believe, the vote to adopt and it's set up similarly for the select board as well.
Well, do you want us, do you want us, I, I don't know.
What do you want to make up?
I'd like them to come back in, the housing, the housing committee.
No, it doesn't hurt.
I think we're pretty much on board.
Doesn't hurt.
No, it doesn't hurt.
I think we're pretty much on board. I think, I think I'd like to report where their ideas are in the plan or show them how we've changed it to, to include them all.
So you think by the 4th, we can do that?
Yeah, and then we'll vote on it on the 18th.
Okay.
I think that's enough, we've been, we've read it so many times.
You know, they have a meeting right before.
Do you want us to go to that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that would maybe eliminate any conflict.
We can try and coordinate it with the chair if they're open to it, I don't see why not.
Sure, they will be. I think, all right, let's do that.
So then you'll email us to let us know.
Yeah, that would then allow us to have a purely planning board meeting prior to the close of the public comment, so. But yeah, I will say, probably 90% of their comments are in the plan, so I am excited about that. Yeah. And in fact, actually, as people were talking, I was taking down examples of citations and that's, if there was enough time, I was going to give that summary, but a lot of what they're saying, so it's great, it's great that we know that our current plan in a lot of ways reflects the voices of the people, so.
All right, so save the 3rd and the 4th, okay, on your calendar. Next, is that, is that good?
Yeah, I want to talk about.
Okay. Aquay Highlands Tripartite Agreement Request for Release.
Okay. I went up there today.
Well.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'm going to let Dennis go first.
Oh, okay.
I went up there today, because I've been looking at the swales. Me and Brian went up there a couple of weeks ago, there was no grass in the one that's near the grass road. Today, when I went up there, there's grass in the first wheel, but the one behind it, there's no grass at all in there. And on the sides, about a foot going up on the slope, it's nothing, it's like beer. And the worst thing, they have that big pile of dirt, they've been sifting it and they put it right near where the swales are. And tomorrow, it's going to rain so hard.
It's going to rain.
All this silt's going to come off of that pile, go in those big holes, if it rains, like they say, and it's going to fill up, we're going to have to have them dig out the, the drains, because I guarantee you, all that, where they have that big pile, it's going to wash right down into the, the swales. So we better, but I want to give them back to that grass growth. There's no grass in the second pile of those, there's like two swales, the second one behind it. When me and Brian went, there was no grass in either one of them. We saw some grass seed and it did come up on the first wheel, but the second one, they cleaned it and it's nice, but there's no grass. And either they got to throw grass down or, I don't know, you know, I would wait till we see the grass grow.
Okay, so, so Dennis is still, still at the same spot?
Yeah, I go up there all the time.
I'm still supporting Dennis. Still supporting Dennis. So is, I don't know who wants to go next, but I don't know, Brian, if you want to go next or do you want me to recognize you?
Sure, sure. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Jacques Moran for the record, the manager of Aquay Highlands and also owner of the company bakery building that constructed the homes. By way of background, as the Board probably knows, in June of 2014, the prior applicant received approval with certain conditions. I purchased the subdivision in 2018 and began construction of all of the infrastructure and completed pretty much all of it 2019, subsequent tripartite agreement was entered into with various items that were on the agreed upon list, of which all of it had since been completed, there was a sum set aside at the April 2nd meeting. Town Planner, Mr. Toman, had pointed out to the Board, the Board had previously voted to release and acknowledge all of the work had been done and released the agreement subject to our putting in a $2,000 bond for the growing of the seed in the, two of the drainage swales. Subsequent to that vote, I had gone into the office and talked to, attempted to talk to Mr. Layer, but he was not there in order to provide the deposit of the $2,000 and he, I had left a message for him. I subsequently went in the following week to try to provide that and enter into a memorandum of understanding, which would indicate that is the item that needed to be completed to support the $2,000. That memorandum, I had discussed with Mr. Pesk, being thought of as important so that any subsequent meeting with the Board didn't go beyond that in adding additional items. That work had been done and Mr. Pesk had opined to the Board at least two occasions that, in his opinion, that work had been completed. There was reference to one of the sections of the swales located next to the grass road that is not seeded, that was by way of agreement. That was by way of agreement with DPW and in discussion with Mr. Pesk. That was not to be seeded. All other areas have been.
That's the proper way to do them.
Well, I'll let Mr. Pesk address that after I complete. At the April 2nd meeting, Dennis had pointed out appropriately that there was some cardboard on the swales. Some of the areas had leaves and debris in it, and he was not comfortable with that. We subsequently cleaned that all up. We had taken a number of pictures today that I had provided by way of email to Mr. Tobin, who said, well, bring your laptop in, because it was, normally those items are provided earlier. I copied you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Pesk on that. Those areas are in very good shape. The grass areas that needed to be seeded were reseeded again and are growing. I really feel at this point in time, it's appropriate for the board to release the, well, I guess you voted to release, I guess, to void the $2,000 requirement, because way back at the time, I had indicated to Mr. Pesk that, listen, I cannot reach Mr. Layer, and by the third time I attempted to reach him, he had already vacated his position. So I said, listen, I'm just going to, and I had already been in the process of doing the work that needed to be done, which was the reseeding. Was revisited by Mr. Pesk. Probably had added additional seeding two more times. It's growing very well. It looks good. And I'm hoping that we can put this to bed tonight.
Nope, I mean, I got pictures myself. There's the front one, and there's the back one with the grass. There's no grass. It was on the plan that there would have to be grass planted in this, the original plan.
So I'm going to, let's go to Brian.
All right.
So, Madam Chair, I just want to give a kind of a brief recap. The first time this board voted on it was 7/17, and that was with Mr. Layer as town planner, and that vote was conditioned on the $2,000 surety, which was punchless item two at the town engineer's request for loam and seeding of the swales. The board then voted again and effectively reaffirmed that vote on November 6th, when Tom Fadala was the acting town planner. As Dennis indicated, he and myself went out on April 18th, and the swales were not vegetated then. I had also previously gone out on 3/26 and taken photos that were in your packet, and they were not vegetated. They were all dirt. As both the applicant and Dennis have indicated, that since that site visit that Dennis and I took on 4/18, there has been improvement in the swell that we're concerned about, which is the swell that's closest to DeGrasse Road. So there are, I believe, and Ed can certainly correct me if I'm wrong about the engineering terms, but there are two forbays in that swell. The first one is vegetated. The second one, I would say is approximately, is showing growth for the first 50% of it. The second 50% is primarily sand. All the other swales, which were the photos that Mr. Moran submitted this afternoon, a little after 4 o'clock, were not at issue. They've been vegetated the entire time. The only swell that is of issue is the one that's closest to DeGrasse Road. What else? Regarding any conversations with DPW, that's the first time I've, I've heard of that. So I, a little clarity there would certainly be appreciated. And as Dennis had mentioned, it is stipulated on the plans that the swales are to be vegetated and that they're to be checked up on, on a monthly basis for a six-month period to ensure that the vegetation has grown. So that's where we're at. The $2,000 surety, again, just for the record, was never received. It was a condition, notwithstanding Mr. Moran's efforts to, to bring it to the department when Evan Layer was wrapping up his tenure.
So Ed, did you have anything to add?
Well, I sure hope I can help you figure this out, because we don't want to keep talking about this for another six months. On June 17th, I met out at the site, June 17th, 2024, met out the site with Catherine Laurent and Mr. Moran and one of the DPW employees. They were out there to look at these detention basins. The one closest to Blue Castle Drive is called Drainage Area A. The one closest to Drainage, to DeGrasse Road is called Drainage Area B. And Ms. Laurent specifically asked us, spoke to us and said, if we're going to accept Blue Castle Drive as a town road someday, which it was on the time, she came out there to inspect it, because she didn't want to say it was okay until she looked at it. She wanted me to be there, and she wanted Mr. Moran to be there. Specifically asked us not to seed the bottom of the basins. Why? So that they perk better. And honestly, folks, if you do nothing to those basins, it'll still grow grass. Doesn't matter whether you like it or not, it's still going to have grass.
But it doesn't have grass now.
So, hang on. So the first.
It doesn't just grow grass.
The first, the first, it'll, it'll still grow grass. It doesn't matter. It will still grow, have growth. It'll be weeds, but it'll still have growth. So she asked us specifically, don't, don't loam and seed the bottom of the second part of the basin. So there's a, there's a entrance side, there's a, there's a flow from the first forbay, using your term, forbay, to the second part. So the first section of the basin, no problem with, with loaming and seeding. I'm just looking at my notes from June 14th, June 17th. Must still loam and seed the bubbler side of the detention basins and side slopes. So what the design is, I've never seen this before, but the design is so that the water comes in, fills those two structures on one of them, on, on basin A, it's two structures, overflows those structures into the basin. Then, when, once that starts to fill up, it fills, it goes across to the other side. There are two different compartments, if you will. And then there's an infiltration side, so that if it ever gets high enough, it doesn't infiltrate, it goes into that inlet, which is basically a leach pit. On the grass road side, there's not two bubblers, there's one. So it comes in on one side, closest to DeGrasse Road. Again, goes up, fills that entire structure first. It's a solid structure. I don't know why they didn't make it a perforated structure. Would have helped with infiltration, but whatever. It's a solid structure. It fills up, goes into the first compartment. And then the second compartment isn't seeded. I specifically told Jacques he didn't need to do that. Why? Because the other guidance we got from DPW. At the time, the other basin A, when Ms. Laurent was saying, don't bother seeding it, it was already grad, it was already, you know, decent growth there. He did, believe it or not, he did scrape it clean, because that's where. He did scrape it clean back when.
Well, that's news to all of us.
Looks like they graded it.
You did say that, and it looked like there was a lot of dead seed there, but Ed.
I'm talking about basin A. He did, he did actually remove the sediment that accumulated there.
Ed, you're, you're talking about basin A on the one that's on the corner of Carriage Road and DeGrasse Road.
No, I'm talking about basin A. A is over by Blue Castle. B is by DeGrasse. So basin A.
Sorry, I, basin, not forbay, okay.
Right, right. So, so that's, that's what it's called on the plan. That's why I'm referring to it that way. So, so basin A, there was some accumulated sediment over the years. That's what happened. That's what it's for. That's what that first compartment for.
Just to save everyone a little time, that's not the one that we've been concerned about.
Correct. So the other side, so he was going to just remove that completely, and I said, well, leave it. If it's stable, leave it alone. So we went to the other side, and both sides of basin B were, were bare. So I agree, when you saw that before, they were bare. So Mr. Moran seeded the bottom of, of, actually seeded, he tried to seed, I think, both of them. I think your staff tried to seed both of them, Jacques. But the first one is definitely seeded and growing, and it looks like it's absolutely fine. The second side, the second compartment, which is the second compartment, is, as of this afternoon, I took a picture of it. It's not completely grown in, but it doesn't need to be. In my opinion, it doesn't need to be. If you guys want it, I'm done talking about it. You can ask them to grow, to seed it.
I, I think we've been really clear throughout the years that we want these to be seeded. Like, we've been so clear.
Unfortunately, he listened to what I told him to do, without guidance that you're different. Well, I'm just telling you, that's, that's the guidance that I was given by the DPW director.
She has absolutely no control over.
I understand that that's the argument that Mr. Fadala had, but I'm just trying to cooperate with the other town department. That's all.
But that was also a different basin, though.
It was both basins. She told us not to do both basins.
But why, why, why would the.
The authority to do that.
We, we 100% agree with that.
If she wants to come back to us and have us modify it, we will.
I mean, the plan, the plan, the plans are recorded, so they, they can't be superseded by, by a board vote. But what, out of curiosity, how would the, how would not vegetating the
Bottom.
Basin, yeah, the bottom of the basin that is on the corner of DeGrasse Road and Carriage Road in any way affect the town adopting Blue Castle Drive, which is on the other side of Carriage Road?
It wouldn't, but if Carriage Road got accepted, just like Blue Castle Drive got accepted, Carriage Road could get accepted too. So that was the, that was the conversation that day. So I didn't have a problem with it.
I defer to the board's performance. The plans are the plans.
Improves the performance of the infiltration.
I'll defer to the board.
Plans are the plans. If you want the, the release of the tripartite agreement, you have to give us the payment of $2,000 for, for the grass. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed.
Had I known that, I would have seeded it at the time, and this would not be an issue today. We'll put the seed down. When it goes, I'll come back and.
I did go back. He did do exactly what I asked him to do, you know, thankfully. He did listen to everything that I've asked. He's even more so on other things, and I've gone back multiple times to inspect it.
That can be frustrating to the applicant, but all of that was news to us.
Yeah, I've never heard of that.
That was all news to us. So that just wasn't communicated to us.
What's going on with the pile of dirt? Is that going to run off into the swales?
So I did have that question after seeing it today. I was concerned, like Dennis was, because the edge of that pile is right on the top of the slope of the second portion of basin B. And it looks like you're processing some nice loam, finally getting rid of that pile, Jacques. But there's no erosion control around the side of it, the basin. Kind of a tough time to be talking about it the day before the nor'easter shows up, but the night before the nor'easter show up. But you're going to have to obviously deal with that when it erodes into that second compartment of basin.
We'll get some sedimentation, control, control on it in the morning.
Okay.
I, I also, on a, on a somewhat related issue, as I was going back over this stuff and trying to refresh my recollection of the history here, I, I did have a question as to, why is it typically we do collect a 53G account from applicants? Why is, why was that not the case? Like, Ed, you're.
Don't look at me. I have no idea.
I, I just think that there's an option of doing a tripartite agreement. That's all.
Oh, no, the tripartite agreement doesn't, isn't a substitute for the 53G account. The tripartite agreement is a substitute for, say, a cash surety or a performance bond through a surety company. The 53G account addresses how we pay Ed to do his inspections. And these inspections have been coming out of the planning board's budget, whereas typically, they're funded by the applicant.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
I believe, and Chrissy, I don't know if you were our recording secretary then, we were done with the 53G kind of scope of work, and the neighborhood came to us with some lingering issues. And we authorized to pay for Ed to go out and help resolve these issues.
Okay.
Do you remember that? We, we.
That was the driveway we did flooded.
We did a special, we did a, we, we did a special vote to pay Ed out of our budget for that neighborhood, because it was more than just, it, it was a lot of lingering things.
Other issues, but the, the swales, I mean, the swales are part of the plans, so I don't, I mean, that should have been part of.
That's probably how the payment system started.
I mean, it's board money. It's not department money. If you guys voted and that's, and you want that to cover the swales, that's fine. I just, to me, it was a bit of a head scratcher to see that, you know, so.
I think there were things that were out of the realm of 53G, and we authorized to use our money. Because the, the neighborhood was here in numerous, like, numbers, complaining about things, but we weren't going to be, we needed to pay Ed.
There's another project that's like that, 17 Silverleaf Road. That was the same boat that was just one lingering lot that never got finished. And by the way, they contacted me last week. They finished paving that road, took pictures and everything. I sent somebody out there to look at it. So I should say that's something I didn't inspect, but I had my, my people inspect. So that's also part of the inspection that we did last week. I'm expecting a, I'll be getting an ASBIL plan, so you can have that. But I did speak to the contractor about it.
Have a recorded copy of the covenant on that one, or?
I, this is an ancient project. This is an ancient project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So can I just, before you leave, Jacques, you're going to seed the bottom. Obviously, it'll, it'll take pretty quick this time of year. And then I'll just go out there and make a final inspection to say it's, it's done. Once you do that, and I guess once Dennis and Brian, you look at it, does he still need to provide you a $2,000 surety for something he already did?
I mean, if the grass has grown.
Then he gets the whole tripartite agreement amount.
Again, I, I don't disagree. That's exactly it.
Here, here's just one thought that I'll float out there, though. If the $2,000 surety had been provided in the fall, the tripartite agreement release would have been given to him.
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, the tripartite agreement is like $89,000. So if we had received $2,000, you would have gotten, you would have netted 87, and then we would have waited for the grass to grow. And then you would have gotten the other two back.
Shortly after the vote for implementing the $2,000, that work had been completed and had been indicated to the board that it had been completed already. So here we are back again. Had some mixed messages along the way on what to do. I, I would suggest and perhaps request the board, not this next meeting, but the subsequent meeting, second meeting from today, that we come back and it would be sufficient time for that grass to grow and to be able to get an opinion and a visit from you as well, that, that comports with what you're looking for. I think if we were to go into the $2,000, I would want some sort of memorandum that we're limiting it to that, so that there's nothing else that comes on. But I, I, this is such a de minimis item at this point. I think if we can have a meeting, or I have the ability to meet with the board in a month from now, at the second meeting from today, that all of this would be behind us.
So that would be the second
In June.
Meeting in June, which is June 18th.
June 18th. I should check that, because that rings a bell.
I want to cancel June's, July's.
I, I unfortunately have a conflict that night in another community, at another planning board, but I can certainly review the site and provide something in writing an email, just so you have it in writing.
That looks like a good date, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this isn't a public hearing, so we don't have to continue to a time indeed, sir.
No, but we'll put it on the agenda for June 18th.
Right. Just for the record, I did send an email on November 20th, after I had read the discussion, saw the discussion that was held on November 6th, to tell the board that everything at the time had been properly addressed.
Yeah, but Ed, that email didn't say that, that Catherine told you to rake it. It just said everything had been properly addressed.
Even here, then, so.
I know, but I went back over the history, and it was all dirt, and there was a photo of it being all dirt.
I can only tell you that I did mention it in public forum more than once, that she did that. In fact, Tom Fadala argued just what you said, that it's none of her business, or it wasn't her authority to tell me that. So when, his last meeting, that's exactly what he said. So I, I, I left, I just told you what she told me, that's all. And I don't mean to throw her under the bus. I'm just explaining what we were discussing.
Thank you.
All right, goodbye.
Take care, Jacques. It was good to see you.
Thank you, Jacques.
And then just to add to your report, Ed, you were talking about a, a different subdivision that got, you're going to, you were working on Fox, Silver Fox?
That was, wow, Silverleaf.
17 Silverleaf Lane, Silverleaf Road or Silverleaf Lane.
Silverleaf.
It was done a year ago, and there was some drainage, and it was a house lot that never got finished, and it was an old, old subdivision. Way before me.
That went down for years.
It's a nice looking house. It's a corner lot. It's contingent now.
All right, so you have some info for Brian for the folder, right?
We should get a record, is it a covenant release that he's looking for, or is it?
No, they just wanted to make sure, because they were doing final paving, and they want to make sure I was aware of it. Of course, I didn't get much notice, but I did get notice, so I got someone to go out and take a look at it. Of course, I didn't get much notice, but I did get notice, so I got someone to go out and take a look at it. And I got to speak to the contractor beforehand, I went over what I expected him to do. And he and my people sent pictures, so that looks great, it looks really good. I didn't get a chance to look at it today, but I will before the end of the week, and then I will put something in writing together. And then there's a little easement document that shows an easement for the drainage leaching pit that comes off the side of the road, so that it's not contributing down the hill. That was the whole problem. So we actually resurrected two catch basins that weren't functioning well. One was completely buried, so now it's working fine. And then a third inlet to a leaching system right at the bottom of that lot that helps take the runoff off of that road and doesn't continue to go out to Katua Road.
Okay, thank you.
But what, because he called me as well, and apparently that last build on that last lot had gotten delayed because.
Last build?
Seventeen, number seventeen.
What last bill, what do you mean? I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
That was the last unit on that, on that way.
Yeah, you said last bill, I don't know what you mean by that.
Build.
Oh, build, sorry, I saw you.
B-Y-L-D, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So I'm not sure exactly what his ask is, though, because I went back over at least our E files for that way, and I don't see anything like an unreleased covenant or a bond, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. They called me to ask me who should get the easement. I said, the HOA, and I said, and he said, okay, I'll talk to the lawyer and talk to the owner. And there is no HOA, I said, okay, then give it to the owner, I don't care, whatever. You know, it's not a town road, as I understand it, but.
Well, they can get in touch with Brian if they need anything. You send your report to him, and that will be.
And, sorry, one quick side question, too, just doubling back to the swales. You know that area that's sandy? Does that need to be loomed or not?
Oh, yeah, sure, he'll rake in some loam and put in some seed.
I've got a little right there.
He's got a pile of it, you just have to rake it off the mountain, right?
We're not gonna lock horns on it again, I'm just asking a question, I'm tapping into Ed's expertise.
All right, let's go.
All right, so.
By the way, did.
No.
Doubling back to that other thing we were playing about.
About the 53G account, is there any issue with the 53G account for Island Pickle?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, it's, there's a six.
Put a new bill on, you'll find out.
There's bills already in, and I haven't been paid, and it's been months, so.
Those bills should have gone out already.
In Aquay, both, but Aquay you already.
Aquay's a different story, that's out of the planning board.
Right.
That's out of the planning board budget, but Island Pickle should have gone out already. But you got 474 Main, right?
I just got 474 Main, I mean, last week. And that's the late, the last one, but I still, I have a new one coming at you.
And then, I mean, that was the one that we were waiting on a replenishment check for, so I know, that's why that one was delayed.
Okay. Are we still waiting on that? Well, we can talk offline.
You got paid, yeah.
No, no, I'm talking about Island Pickle.
I don't know what's going on.
We approved it, you're saying we approved it and it hasn't been processed? Because we voted.
I agree that you have, I just don't know if there was just, if it was waiting on additional funds from the owner, I don't know, the applicant.
I'll have to check. I thought Island Pickle went out already, I was under the impression it went out already.
Okay.
All right. New Business Nun, Chair's report, the only thing I have to report is I'd like to cancel the meeting on July 2nd.
Second. Make a motion. Make a motion.
There are seconds?
Second.
Nothing on the agenda, right?
Not presently.
Okay.
So it's a cookout at Mary's House, drive for it, or bring your food.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's your birthday.
No, July 19th.
Oh, we have to do another one, all right. Town Planner's Report.
I'll just be brief in the interest of time, because this kind of also overlaps with the Cape Cod Commission report, but I did meet with two members of the Cape Cod Commission to discuss the RPP, and they're also presently holding subregional stakeholder updates on that matter. That's it for now.
Okay. Do you want to expand on that, under Board Members' Reports, Cape Cod Commission? So the Cape Cod Commission is updating the regional policy plan?
I did.
So Brian and I went to a meeting earlier this week, and the changes that they're making to their overall goals look fine. You'll see in your packet, the proposed change to the Community Activity Center. So I'm gonna put it on an agenda for us to kind of look at that. If you remember, Mashpee Commons came in several years ago with the bylaw that was entitled Community Activity Center. The Community Activity Center that's been drawn from Mashpee with basically no public buy-in or input is basically that land. What I have commented on at different meetings with the Cape Cod Commission regarding this RPP update, the regional policy plan update, is for them to drop the community activity centers and really push these growth incentive zones, which are smaller in scope and really in response to activities like rezoning and, you know, a developer that's engaged in working with the town. You'll see them, there's one in Yarmouth for all the motels on Route 28. They were like, growth incentive zones are like pre-approval. They're, it's a pre-approval so that you don't have to go through that big, long DRI process. It's pre-approved, and you can kind of set your threshold and your mitigation all at once for a whole area. So stay tuned. I'm gonna send you some stuff, and maybe we can get a good comment into them about that.
And Karen, I think you seemed to indicate that you didn't see it in the packet, but there's a GIS image that looks like this, and it shows.
Explain to me what it was.
It wasn't, it wasn't titled, yeah.
Yeah, the blue is the 2025 line, and the yellow is the 2018 line. So net for net, it shows kind of a shrinkage of the CAC around Mashpee Commons.
Because one of the, their 2018 boundary captured area that we had earmarked for open space. So that was, that was a comment that was put in years ago that they've listened to, but maybe we can give them some more comments. You know, I don't want it, first of all, to benefit like only one property owner, right? It's like, it should be, anyways.
And actually, sorry, I just thought of one other thing I wanted to report on. So I met with CPC this week, as well as the Select Board this week, and discussed with both of them, the Barnstable County Shared Regional Housing Services Program received a positive vote from the CPC to fund continued participation in that program when the ARPA funding runs out. So it's looking like we'll be the 13th out of 15 towns on Cape Cod to continue participation in that program in the next fiscal year. Regarding the meeting with the Select Board, we're going to explore other possible funding sources for gap funding for the first quarter of that program, since the CPC funding won't kick in until after Fall Town Meeting. The, but in the event that those sources don't pan out, the general consensus, it seemed to be among the Select Board members, is that AHT would approve that funding. And then there was one other thing, actually, the other thing I want to talk, wanna, I have to report on, I'll do later, just because it's actually, it's actually taking steps towards implementing some of our HPP that's, hasn't yet been adopted yet. So let's get that adopted, and then I can report on that.
All right. So Board Member Committee reports, Cape Cod Commission, they're updating their RPP. And so stay tuned for more news on activity centers and possibility of public comment. Charter Review Committee, no meeting. Community Preservation Committee, they met, they voted to recommend town meeting approve $9,235 for funding the, our participation in the Shared Regional Housing Services Program that Brian just described. Design Review.
No, no meeting.
Plan Review.
We met on 868 Falmouth Road. That's a, the I-1 Solar Project that we talked about a few meetings back. That's moving forward to do a modification to its ZBA special permit to expand its use to include these ground-mounted solar panels. It will also come before this board as a public meeting, because they'll need to receive waivers from the dimensional requirements from the updated code for us. So that should be happening shortly, but the scheduling of that will be contingent upon ZBA availability, because what we'd like to do is do a planning board meeting just before the ZBA meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
I will update you all next meeting, I was unable to make the meeting.
Okay. Historic District Commission.
I think we're gonna have a meeting, right, Historic Commission?
Yeah, it's looking like it for the, there's gonna be a slight expansion to the market down here at the end of Great Neck Road.
So did you find out if Junior was on the board, did you call up Brian?
Hannah, I believe, emailed him, I'm not sure we've heard back yet.
I think he is.
Yeah.
But we don't meet that much, and I forgot, you know?
Yeah, he is on the webpage, I just, no, so.
All right, so that's up to Brian to schedule the meeting and stuff.
Okay. There's correspondence in your package, we already talked about the one regarding the Cape Cod Commission Community Activity Center outline. There's also an interesting one, there's a public hearing notice from the Mashpee Conservation Commission regarding amendments to their Regulation 25, land subject to coastal storm flowage. That public hearing is tomorrow, May 22nd. It starts at 6:30, and it will be held in this room. And I believe the existing and the revised Regulation 25 is in your packet in the public meeting notice. And then, if there's any other topics?
Nope.
No, we'll can go to, if you guys are comfortable, go to Board Offices and Reorganization. I do want to formally welcome Michael Milbury to the Planning Board, congratulations. Also, congratulations, Karen Faulkner, who got re-elected to the Planning Board, congratulations. Well, Ms. Mike Richardson, but he is on the Select Board, so we will see him every once in a while. The Chair would like to open nominations for Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk.
I nominate Mary for Chair.
Second.
I accept, and any other nominations for Chair? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Accept nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Karen for Vice Chair, second.
Do you accept?
Accept.
Okay, any other nominations for Vice Chair? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd accept nomination for Clerk.
Who's the clerk now? Do you want to be clerk? Okay, I nominate Dale for Clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you accept the nomination? All in favor, any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
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 Gee, I want to be clerk.
I know. So here's our other boards and committees, right? And I would really like to stay on Charter Review and Community Preservation Committee.
That's fine, do we have to nominate?
I'm in the, I'm in those deep, yeah, you would have to.
I nominate Mary for Charter Review Committee and Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to stay on the Historic.
You want to stay on the Historic Commission? I'd accept a nomination for Dennis being our representative to the Historic District.
Second.
So be.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we have Cape Cod Commission, Design Review, Plan Review, well, not really Plan Review, Environmental Oversight Committee. Are you happy staying on the Environmental Oversight Committee?
Stick with the EOC.
Seeing that he is the, are you the head DNR person for the tribe?
I'm the second head.
Yeah, this, okay.
Two heads, huh?
He's the assistant head of DNR of the tribe.
You're the front of the back.
I would nominate Dale to be our representative to the EOC.
Second.
Second, all right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so that leaves, I know, that leaves Design Review and Cape Cod Commission.
Which one do you want, Mike?
I can't leave, Mary, Mary and Romero would be sad to see me leave, so I'm staying.
You're gonna get the Cape Cod Commission.
Should I be excited about that?
Yeah, it's an awesome one.
Okay.
All right, so I nominate Karen for our representative to the Design Review.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I nominate Mike to be our, it's like a watchdog of the Cape Cod Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I, Brian, I believe, is their official.
Cape Cod.
Contact, so that when they send that legal letter about a DRI or some legal action, they send it to Brian.
Which you send to me.
Right, but there's a lot going on at the Cape Cod Commission. There's meetings, there's newsletters, yeah. But if you could watch over them and report back about what's going on.
Okay.
I can send you some emails that have like a link to subscribe.
All right.
But they're like, they're our regional planning commission. A lot of their stuff is on Zoom, and then they do have meetings. Who is our representative, is it Ernie?
Yeah, Ernie.
It's Ernie Vigilio, do you know him?
No.
Yeah, so he's our official representative to the commission, Ernie Vigilio. And David Whedon, who was here before.
Yes.
He's the Native American representative to the commission, so we have like two votes on the commission.
And don't get too intimidated regarding the volume, like, a lot of the DRIs are in other towns and don't really affect directly Mashpee.
If the property that somebody wants to build is 10,000 square feet or over.
For commercial buildings, and then residential is 30, and it's a more.
Permission and get everything, yeah.
And the Cape Cod Commission Act is special. It allows our Regional Planning Commission, the Cape Cod Commission, to require mitigation.
Yeah.
Not every place has that.
It's basically like a county-wide planning board for large projects.
Yeah. So Pickle.
Pickle call.
Island Pickle has to, had, has to give a little bit of money for traffic improvements, because they're gonna draw traffic into town, so they have to help us with our intersections. They don't pay for the whole thing, they pay for a little bit of it, so.
How many people are doing a pollinator garden this time?
I don't.
Okay, just to remind you that you need to protect those butterflies.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else doing a pollinator garden?
I'll take a monarch, my mom loves monarch butterflies, so I'll take one.
I'm gonna give you a monarch butterfly.
I'm doing one at work.
Okay. Are you doing a pollinator garden?
Well, yeah, I mean, my garden is a pollinator garden.
Monarchs coming around there.
I actually have a.
How about you?
Several.
Look at Chrissy's like I am.
Chrissy, get one for me, will ya?
This one's going quick, get him.
It's okay.
Thank you.
You're doing one, too?
My wife has got one going, she started planting this.
Very good, wildflowers or milkweed will do it.
But if you have dogs, if you have dogs, don't leave the milkweed out where they can eat it.
What's that?
Dogs aren't supposed to eat milkweed, so. You can grow it like in a glass container.
Oh, okay.
But they're eating that.
How about cats?
All right, I'd take, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
People poison animals by milkweed?